Good evening and welcome to the first council meeting back after our summer hiatus. I'm glad we're having a wonderful turnout this evening. If you could please take your seats or A seat so we can start the council meeting. Thank you. The meeting is hereby called to order. And before we do our traditional pledge of allegiance, I would like to say a few words. Saturday, September 11th has been and will always be a day that will be remembered for its devastation and tragedy. Our nation was violated by acts of terrorism. Thousands died, thousands of innocent men and women. There were many heroes that day, and some of those who brought special pride to our country were the New York Fire Department and Police Department personnel. It brought home to all of us the importance of our safety personnel and their commitment to protecting our families and property. As a tribute to these brave men and women, we are proud to introduce our community's Fire Department and Police Department color guard. Please stand. And please place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Every year on September 11th, we recognize the devastating events of this historic day, and we honor those who experienced the tragedy. This moment of recognition allows us to express our admiration and respect for the innocent victims, first responders, and families of 9/11 victims. I ask that you, the audience and everybody else, viewers, bow their heads for a moment of silence to remember those lost on September 11th, 2001. Thank you, and I would also like to express our gratitude to all safety personnel and particularly our local police and fire departments. They do an exceptional job throughout the year protecting and serving our community. Please know we keep your safety and the well-being in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call? Councilmember Irwin?
Here.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Councilmember Adam?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
Here.
Mayor Bill de la Peña? Present. Thank you. There are no requests for any continuance of any public hearing or agenda item, I understand. We will then go straight to special presentations. So please give me a moment while I move to the microphone. And while I do that, I would like to invite John Short III, outgoing president of the Thousand Oaks Little League, as well as Roger Kovak, manager, and Mike Sheehan, Jeff Francis, coaches for the Thousand Oaks Big League team. Excellent, very good. All right, we have a special presentation, as I said. Thousand Oaks is a community in which we take pride, and especially pride in our youth. Tonight, I would like to tell you about an extraordinary group of boys that again represented our city with outstanding character, dedication, commitment, and sportmanship. And of course, I am referring to none other than the Conejo Valley District 13 Big League Team. This year, Conejo Valley District 13 won the Western District Champions, making them eligible to attend the 2013 Big League Baseball World Series in easily South Carolina this past July. Congratulations. Our team had an impressive 12 wins and two losses going into the World Series, outscoring their opponents by 121 to 37 runs. In the World Series, our team had earned run average of 2.13. Pitching staff had 110 strikeouts in 92 innings, and the team batting average was what?
374.
With eight home runs, 19 doubles, two triples, and a total of 134 hits. Those stats are very impressive. Our team also took time out of their busy baseball schedule while in South Carolina to visit children at both Shriners Hospital and the Ronald McDonald House, handing out signed baseballs and posters to patients, and this day was very inspirational for all involved. So on behalf of the City Council, I would like to congratulate the team, the team manager and coaches, on your 2013 Western District Championship and National Runner-Up status for the United States Big League World Series. And would you please call up the team so we can know them by name and recognize every one of them? And here is the commendation in honor of your accomplishments, and I will hand this to you, John Short. Congratulations.
Anthony Shirts. Brandon Fisher. Jackson Simons Card. Casey Ryan. Rick Sheehan. The other 12 are all at school. Oh, hell, hold on, late comer Garrett Sorino.
Congratulations. Now, you can't sit down here. We're gonna have to take a picture with the council, so where should we do that? Would you please follow me so we can take a picture? And good luck to the young men on all your future endeavors. All right. We have a wonderful turnout. This is our first time in probably nine or 10 years where we're taking the show on the road. We have a wonderful turnout. How many of you are from Newberry Park? Uh-huh, very good, that would be the majority. And how many of you are from other parts of Thousand Oaks? Uh-huh, also a very strong showing. Wonderful. Well, I hope you like this, and if it's a success, we'll do it more often. And it's something that Councilmember Andy Fox suggested at an earlier council meeting earlier this year. All right. We now go to the public comments section of the evening. Madam Clerk?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for City Council and the official record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Twenty-two people have presented cards and pursuant to council standards. Speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow card will be displayed when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you very much, and our first speaker is someone whom we just honored, and that would be John Short, followed by... Well, first... Go ahead, John.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff. I'm here on behalf of a ride that is going to be happening here in Thousand Oaks this coming weekend. We're honoring September 11th. It's called Ride of the Flags. This is the sixth time this has happened, and basically, it's done through the White Heart Foundation. And last year, I went on the ride, started at Point Mugu, and ended up at Pepperdine University honoring 9/11 with the flags, the 2,977 flags they have at Pepperdine. Last year, before I went on the ride, I talked to the police chief and city manager and asked if we could possibly do that through Thousand Oaks instead of through Westlake. So they did some investigation, worked with the White Heart Foundation, and this year, Saturday, the ride's gonna start at Point Mugu, come up through Lynn Road, downhill crest, down to Westlake, down to Agoura, and back down to Pepperdine. And there would be about 1,800 motorcycles, predominantly Harley-Davidsons, raising money on behalf of a wounded warrior. And this year's recipient will be James Carey. He was a Marine, sergeant in the Marine Corps, and grew up, and his only goal in life was to become a bodyguard for the President of the United States. This led him into the Marine Corps. In 2009, during a water reconnaissance training mission at Camp Pendleton, Sergeant Carey almost drowned. His fellow Marines were able to save his life, but without oxygen, he had a great deal of brain damage and went into a coma. Because of the accident, Sergeant Carey is now blind and unable to walk and has difficulty talking. Through the Ride of the Flags and the White Heart Foundation, they're going to raise money for his rehabilitation, including a custom wheelchair and a weighted vest, and also additional rehabilitation procedures. So on behalf of Police Chief Randy Pendus, City Manager Mr. Scott Mitnick, we thank you for allowing this to happen this weekend. They'll be coming downhill Crest Boulevard, probably about 11:45 on Saturday morning, so if you sleep late, you might want to get up early that day, because there'll be about 1,800 Harleys coming down, flying the American flag, and honoring those who paid the ultimate sacrifice on September 11th, 2001. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Our next speaker will be the Ventura County Clerk and Recorder, Mr. Mark Lund, followed by Dr. Richard Elsley and Trudy Shapiro. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, honorable members of the City Council, and distinguished members of the city staff. I come here for two purposes. I'm Mark Lund from Newberry Park, and I want to thank you for your leadership, for bringing government to the community. It's, as you can tell by the showing here, this is just good government. And the second, to report, two weeks ago, we were lucky to have the mayor to an event that the City of Thousand Oaks allowed us, the county clerk's office, to come into the city and to co-locate with the city clerk's office, so the business of the county clerk can be done in this, here, right here in town. It's an exciting opportunity for us. I wanted to thank all of you for the leadership and the wisdom and the vision to make that happen, particularly Jackie Irwin. I want to call Jackie out. When we first started to talk about this, I talked to Jackie about it. Jackie, you weren't able to make the event last two weeks ago, so I wanted to thank you for making that happen. But Mr. Mitnick, I wanted to point out the great leadership of your folks, Lynda Lawrence and Antoinette, and your city staff, and about how accommodating you are to our staff to make this happen. We have about 55,000 car trips each year that go down to the Hall of Administration to do things like get a marriage certificate, or get a birth, death, or record, and to be sworn into various offices. So there's a lot of trips that take place. We wanted to make sure that we could save you time. It's an hour down, it's an hour back, and whatever time down there to do your business. And Thousand Oaks has showed some real leadership by allowing us to partner. We're here for two times a week, on Tuesday and Thursday, from 9 to 3. It's a pilot project. If it works, and we think it is working, we've got six people that are waiting for their marriage licenses come this Thursday, we'll expand it even further. But I come here to say thank you, and thank you for having the city council meeting here tonight.
Thank you. Dr. Richard Elsley?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, city staff, residents of Thousand Oaks, and the rest of the known universe. My name is Dr. Richard Elsley, resident of Thousand Oaks, and it is my pleasure to be here to announce the sixth season of the Discovery Center's Science Speaker Series. Science is impacting our lives more and more each day, and it behooves us all to know at least a little about science. And besides, science is just plain fun. So in the Science Speaker Series, five times a year, we bring in scientists who can describe what they do in a way that anybody can understand and has fun doing it. Our first talk this season is going to be two days from now, Thursday, September 12th, at the Shear Forum Theater. Doctors Jennifer Perry and Colleen Delaney from Cal State Channel Islands will talk about prehistoric Californians. Don't you sometimes wonder what people were thinking a long time ago? I sometimes wonder about the people who used to own my house and things they did before I bought it. But these two professors are gonna talk about people who lived in this area 5,000, 10,000 years ago, how they got here, how they lived, and what happened to them. Second talk is going to be in November. Dr. Ravi Davae of UCLA is going to talk about new techniques for treating heart disease. In February, Mike Sander from Jet Propulsion Lab is going to talk about the future of spaceflight. Will it be people? Will it be robots going out there? In March, Dr. Stuart Sumida of Cal State San Bernardino, he is a biologist and anatomist who advises Hollywood. If you're gonna make animated people or animals, you really ought to understand about bones and joints and muscles if you want people to think they're believable. And finally, in April, Dr. Amanda Clark of UCLA will talk about new advances in stem cells. More information, go to our website, science speakerseries.org, or call 805-905-8168. Come out Thursday night and have some fun and learn a little science.
Thank you. I have several other speakers here who wanted to speak under public comments, but I believe your intent was to actually speak perhaps under the first item we're gonna hear, final housing element update, that I think one of you mentioned. So if you speak under the housing element update, it will be part of that record, but I understand, and I want to check with the city attorney, if you speak under public comments, that will not be part of the record for the housing element update, is that correct? So those who want to speak about the housing element update probably want to wait until that item is called, and that will be just in a few minutes, rather than being called now. I believe Trudy Shapiro, you were the one who approached me, that would just take a few minutes before we call the housing element update. Jim Wolfe, I'm not sure about Mel Silberberg. Let's see, Mr. Kidway, Kid Y, I should say, are you going to... Should I call you then for this one? All right, Mr. Kidway.
I begin in the name of God, who is most beneficial, most merciful, Nekek Balker, resident of Newberry Park, director of concern, citizens of Thousand Oaks. It was appropriate that I started by invoking the name of God. Some of you may have noticed the Islamic center of the Conejo Valley on Borcher Road on your way. Twice a year in this gymnasium, we have our prayer celebration right in this gymnasium, and the priest is where the mayor is, giving his talk. And so I want to thank the CRPD for allowing us this place. There's a lot of calories that end up inside here, because outside, we have a feast, and since we have people from all over the world who are Muslims and are residents of the Conejo Valley, we have baklava and French pastries and American donuts. So I just want to bring that up. I'm glad that the so-called show is on the road. I don't consider this to be a show. I consider it to be serious government to the people, by the people, and that's the way it should be approached. Unfortunately, it has not, and that's one of the reasons it was not mentioned. But the ACON was blunt and used Mr. Fox's comments, that the residents themselves gave an F to the council for preaching out to the people. And while we appreciate it, but it is obvious that the residents are really not being given top priority. I mean, I've been speaking since the '60s, when I was a kid, in the old country. And in a third-world country, we had a podium at all times. When, in 1963, there's no podium. There's no overhead. I wrote earlier on to the city clerk, she's smiling, an overhead, the good doctor has always used an overhead about the science projects. It would be too much work to have an overhead. The good thing is, for a change, the staff is not on the right or left of the mayor. That's what makes a better government, because there's too much talk going on, going on with the mayor all the time, with the city manager and city attorney. Good cities like the Port Juaniemi or Agoura Hills never have staff over there. If you have to ask a question, you ask it on the mic, and it's an open dialogue. It's not done under the table, which is done. Also, it's good that you don't have a Rolls-Royce timer. I know, I don't know, there's a yellow timer, which is good, but the Rolls-Royce timer, it costs a lot of money to have it, and even staff has problems using it. Also, the voting machine, there's not 435 members here. I mean, there's five people here, and you should have a voice vote, and the city clerk should say the names. It's embarrassing for me, because people tell me, was it the pretty council member that voted for it, or was it the other one? I think both are pretty. But people don't know the names, and that's what you should do. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. We have Jill Litterer here with the Greater Conejo Valley Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, Mayor Bill de la Peña, city councilmembers, city staff. I also have here with me tonight our Director of Government and Economic Affairs, Sarah Eckberg from the chamber. We so appreciate your meeting out here in Newberry Park. We have many vibrant businesses out here, as you well know, and we know it's no small task, moving a group this size over here, and we very much appreciate it. We're just here tonight to tell you a little bit about what your chamber is doing. First, we have Taste of Conejo coming up next week. We know that some of you are gonna be out of town, working on our citizens' and businesses' behalf, and we're so sorry that you're not gonna be here for it, but we encourage everybody who's here in the audience tonight and listening at home to join us. It is the largest public event held each year at the Four Seasons. There'll be over 100 vendors, many of them from right here in Newberry Park, so we encourage everybody to come. A little further away, the chamber is gonna be hosting a trip to China, and we hope that anybody who might be interested in joining us will contact Sarah for a little bit more information about that. There's so much business that is done globally now. The Sister City program has originated here with the City of Thousand Oaks. We appreciate that, and that's gonna be nothing but a benefit for our local businesses going forward. We have State of the City coming up on December 3rd, so everybody, please mark your calendars. That's gonna be a great day to celebrate a terrific year for our mayor, Bill de la Peña, for our councilmembers, for our wonderful city. We are so fortunate to have this collaborative relationship with all of you. We all chose to do business here and to live here. We chose it for good reason. So please mark your calendars for December 3rd, State of the City. We also hope, on behalf of the chamber board, that you'll check out our new publication. It's quarterly, it's called Conejo View. It is a business magazine, there's also a flip version online. The public calendar is in here, so anybody that has any special events, anything that you'd like us to publish, get on our website, just let us know at the chamber, and of course, the chamber calendar is part of this as well. It was an idea to kind of bring all the community events together, so everybody isn't tripping over each other. Also, real quick, we have, we hope you'll check out our new website. It has about 45,000 unique visits per month, and we are very excited to say that our board retreat, our annual board retreat, is gonna be held this year at the Civic Arts Plaza. We could not think of a better place, we look forward to it. Thank you for hosting us, and should anybody have any questions, please don't hesitate to contact Sarah or me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Mel Silberberg, followed by Sharon Moret and Andy Levine.
Good evening, Mayor de la Peña, councilmembers and city manager. My name is Mel Silberberg, resident of Thousand Oaks. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. On June 13th, I was honored to receive the 2012 City of Thousand Oaks Senior of the Year Award at a ceremony sponsored by Council on Aging, held at the Global Adult Community Center. I want to take this opportunity to thank the City Council, Council on Aging, and their awesome city staff liaison for this recognition. In accepting this award, I do so on behalf of all of the senior volunteers who work many hours to not only save the city and the community many dollars, but continue to make Thousand Oaks a great place to live. As a tribute to our ever-growing senior population, I take this as a moment of resolve and commitment to continue my efforts on behalf of the city as an advocate and supporter of our aging citizens. The challenges of our aging demographic will impact many aspects of the city governance over the next 20 years or more. In 2007, 2009, the city had the foresight to commission- In 2007, 2009, the city had the foresight to commission the Senior Adult Master Plan, which can strategically address these challenges. The city is especially blessed with a cadre of dedicated volunteers on the SAMP implementation teams, empowered to assist the city in its planning. And I beg of the city, city council, to avail themselves of these professional and highly qualified people. You really have a diamond there, and I think you really should use it. And their time, it's, of all the things that you do, that item, their time is free. In this regard, the city needs to continue to revisit the budget for senior services. I do not believe the city has allocated its resources commensurate with the challenges which lie ahead. Just consider this projection. By the year 2030, over 50% of our population will be over the age of 55. Over the past 10 years or so, the budget for senior services has been essentially flat. The biggest part of the budget by far is for the global center maintenance. Has the city considered the fiscal impact of a situation where half of our residents could spend about half of their income on healthcare-related expenditures? I'd like to add one thought. Tonight, we are here in Newberry Park, often the subject of talk about additional recreation facilities for seniors, usually around election time, but talk is cheap. In 1921, an Englishman, Gordon Hewitt, once said, "Not only must justice be done, it must also be seen to be done." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Silberberg. Next speaker is Sharon Moret, followed by Andy Levine and Dale Schleish.
Good evening, council, and I'd like to thank all of you and Mayor Fox for allowing the show to be, the council meeting to be in Newberry Park. The acoustics in here are very good for me because usually I require a hearing device, and so far, I've heard everything that has taken place. I wanted to discuss the assessment and find out more about it as to whether Dos Vientos will be further assessed due to the fire. And basically, when it comes to work on the median, a lot of different areas in the city have the medians updated, et cetera. And so I don't think that we should be assessed any more than any other area due to that reason. And I just want to thank all of you for the hard work that you're doing for the city.
Thank you, Andy Levine, followed by Dale Schleish and Clint Matkovich.
Andy Levine, Newberry Park, California, mayor and city council. I just want to thank you for having the meeting in Newberry Park because sometimes in Newberry Park, we feel, I mean, we have Joel up in the board, but still, sometimes we feel like we should be having more people on the board. And I don't think it's going to be fair for Newberry Park and Dos Vientos residents to have to pay for the medians. Because, I mean, if you're going to work in Thousand Oaks and charge us, and they used to be charging the Thousand Oaks people, I mean, their taxes should be going up too if you're going to raise our taxes from the medium over here. And the other thing too is the post office in Newberry Park, it's kind of ridiculous having it all the way up there. You used to be calling it the Camrio Post Office. And people are just going over here to do their, like the UPS, you can do the same exact thing. So the post office did a bad thing, and they're going to be paying for it in their pocketbooks. But, I mean, they already gave Lance Armstrong all this money, so. And I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dale Schleish. If, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing the name correctly. Followed by Clint Matkovich and Rick Lemo.
I've asked to speak at 9A instead of hearing community comments, if that's okay.
Okay, your speaker card mentioned the Orchard Road median.
Yes.
So, okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Rick Lemo, followed by, well, actually, it was Clint Matkovich, followed by Rick Lemo. Sorry about that. Clint Matkovich, followed by Rick Lemo.
Thank you, Mayor Bill de La Peña, members of the council, city staff. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Clint Matkovich, lifetime resident of Thousand Oaks, 32 years old. I'm very proud to say that. And I'm also very proud to see a council meeting held here in Newberry Park. Newberry Park has certainly been a large part of my childhood, even though I've grown up in Wildwood. Newberry Park is a place of very many fond memories for me and my generation. I appreciate that we're all here tonight. I don't have prepared remarks like I usually do. I've been involved in local government since I was 15, so please bear with me. I do have something, excuse me, I do have something important to talk about. And perhaps over the last seven years, you've seen my letters to the ACORN about a property at the end of Alice Drive, which is a 30-plus acre wetland property. It is privately owned. I am fully aware of private property rights. I'm not attacking a private property owner. There were 100 houses proposed there in 2006. What I'm asking, the mayor and the council and the city that I was born and raised in, can we negotiate with this property owner in hopes of acquiring this property, in hopes of restoring it? As we have many other areas in the past. Wildwood Mesa was acquired in Wildwood, for example. Couple of months ago, there was a property near the old Kmart, near the old Kmart facility, as I understand, that was bought, and that was just a couple acres or so. This is over 30 acres. And personally, as somebody that's grown up here, extremely relevant to the culture and heritage of our community. Now, maybe we can't. Maybe we can't acquire it. Maybe the developer won't sell it. Then that's the situation. But I have not seen any effort from the council or the park district or anybody else that has made an effort, and that's simply what I'm asking for. And I hope that you all agree with me, and I hope this, we can at least see what can happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Lemo.
Good evening, mayor, council, and staff. Three things tonight. First of all, most importantly, if you could mark your calendar, Valentine's Day of 2014, it'll be a very important lunch date that we'd like you to make. I am the first male chair, and this is the 10th anniversary of the Go Red for Women event for the American Heart Association. They've had nine really successful years. All nine of those years, there has been a female chair. So we need your support to make sure this is successful in its 10th year. What a lot of people don't know is that the number-one killer of women in America is heart disease. And that's because women are usually busy doing a whole bunch of other things and not paying attention to the symptoms that men seem to have even if they stub their toe. So it's really important that you keep that date. It's lunchtime on the 14th of February, and that is Valentine's Day of 2014. The second thing is, I wanted to thank particularly the police and fire, but everybody on staff. Kids get a really big treat out of seeing the fire trucks and the police gear here tonight. And I think that was a nice addition to our council meeting. And last but not least, I do know that it is a lot of work. I don't mind that there's not a podium or any of the fancy things. I think it's great that you take the time, both you do and city staff, to go around and bring these meetings out of City Hall a little bit. It's a great turnout tonight, and I think that you'll see that most people are pretty well satisfied with the government we have here. So thank you very much.
Thank you. That includes our public comment section of the evening. And I will now turn it over to the city manager, Mr. Mitnick, to answer some of the concerns or address the concerns raised.
Madam mayor, members of the council, with respect to the events and upcoming items that were mentioned, we'll make sure we link them with our community calendar so the public is made aware. We heard, and we'll follow up with some of the individuals that expressed some concerns about desire for more services and programs and stuff like that. We'll make sure staff follows up. With respect to the Orchard Road median issue that was raised, some of you may have saw that as you drove in, that will be covered later on one of the agenda items when we give an update from the spring fire incident. However, if the individual who raised that concern, if you would, if you're not going to be here for that portion, Jace Burgen, our Public Works Director, would be happy to talk to you right now. They can go out in the lobby and have that conversation and bring you up to speed on that. Comments were made about the, we refer to it as the Meridian property there off of Orchard, near the 101. And we would be happy to meet with that individual to bring him up to speed as to where we are on that property with the property owner. Essentially, nowhere at this point in time. That property owner continues to explore options and alternatives to develop something on that property. But there are a lot of restrictions and challenges associated with that property. So to be clear, there is no project or proposal in front of the city at this time. There's nothing on the council's agenda forecast for that property. And I think that's it. Thank you very much.
I think there were comments about the post office. Do we have an update on that?
Oh, maybe Drew Powers, our Assistant City Manager, can do that. Thank you.
Yes, in terms of the Newberry Park post office, as most folks know, the postal service made a decision to close the existing location and move into a new location on the other side of the freeway. Staff and a couple of council have been involved in negotiations with the postal service about adding some additional services wherever we can. We are continuing to do that. We have added and relocated a new Dropbox at the previous location and at the Newberry Park library. So we'll continue to work closely with the postal service to do what we can to supplement service in that area. We're also working with them in terms of signage to make that new location easier for residents to find.
Thank you. All right, we now move to the consent calendar, item number seven. And we'll ask if there are any items that need to be pulled. Councilmember Irwin?
I want to poll 7C.
All right, 7C. Anything else? 7C. Mr. Price?
Thank you. Poll 7R, please.
R? All right, and I will poll 7P. So we have COPR. All right. Anybody would like to move the remainder of the calendar?
Excuse me, mayor, we do have a speaker for the consent calendar.
Oh, we sure do. It would be Mr. Nick Kidwai. Thank you.
Newberry Park Director of Concerns, citizens of Thousand Oaks. I too would pray Caesar if I was given million-dollar property and I had to pay $1 rent a year. I would like to comment about the minutes in that they are completely un-American. And we have some people who are involved and active now that talk about certain issues that are important to them. But if you read the minutes, which are supposed to be a synopsis as to what happened in the council meeting, all the clerk puts is the name. So all their comments are wasted. In fact, it was earlier said to speak under the housing element because it would be part of the record, but certainly not part of the minutes because in the minutes, you do not elaborate on it. And it's absolutely disgusting that we have such a great city and such great residents, and our city government continues on that wrong trajectory. And that's one of the reasons I'm glad. And I asked the city clerk, and his attitude survey is not being released, that Mr. Fox talked about that gave the city council an F. I didn't do it. I didn't even, I didn't even vote on it. I did get a postcard, but I didn't get a vote on it. But there are people in general, because it is obvious that the residents are really not the highest priority. The Chamber of Commerce is getting $85,000. And for the median, you have to pay to repair it. Just five years ago, the chamber got $29,000. And if you do a survey of the other cities, they don't give nothing, or maybe $10,000. I don't belabor them, but your priorities are wrong. I mean, we have the great sheriff cars outside, and the crime night out that costs only $10,000. And the chief of police told me personally about four years ago when it was taken off the calendar that this is Mr. Kidwai just for one year. And no one on the council dares even talk about this because the city manager basically runs the city. P, indoor swap meet. It was not a swap meet. It was an indoor retail extravaganza, and it was defeated by one vote. It would have brought, you know, 300-plus nice jobs. There were, the residents were on one side, four people were on the other side, two people who were the competitors of the real estate agent, that should really not have been listened to. Then we have this bogus elitist argument that BMW would move away, that swayed one council member, and that this was, the tech center is for Fortune 500 companies. Disgusting. Maybe you should move a little bit further because, I mean, I'm supposed to look there, not on the side. I mean, it's basic things, I mean, human being things. I mean, this is America in 2013. I'm just there.
Thank you, Mr. Kidwai. Mrs. Mann, would it be possible for you to sit maybe next to Drew Powers so that they can see the card? Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to move the remainder of the consent calendar minus items COPR.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion, so we're going to call for a voice vote. Madam clerk?
Councilmember Irwin? Councilmember Price?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Bill de La Peña?
Yes. Thank you. We will now go to item, oh, go ahead.
I just want to read the ordinance title.
Yeah, you do need to do that.
For item Q, which is an ordinance amending the municipal code relating to zoning maps and changes in zoning classification of property located at 2423, 2425, 2441, and 2443 Jakita Lane Zone Change Z 2012-70337.
Thank you. Item number 7C, who will, oh, Mrs. Irwin, go ahead.
This is a question for the city attorney's office, and it is about the response to the grand jury report on the lakes. Could you just kind of give an overview of basically what you thought of the grand jury's findings? And then specifically about their conclusion that we ought to sell the lake? What is your legal, the lakes, what is your legal opinion of that?
Of course. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. As you know, one of the powers of the Ventura County Grand Jury is to investigate and make recommendations regarding a public agency's practices and procedures. And under the penal code, the city is obligated to respond to that report. In this case, the grand jury has made facts and findings regarding the city's redevelopment history on Teo Boulevard and as well as the history of the lake's development just to the east of City Hall. City staff has provided a response for council's consideration that addresses some of the facts and findings. In particular, we noted factual errors. For example, there was a fact that the city's specific plan number 11, which governs this City Hall area, is a redevelopment plan. That's false. A redevelopment plan is a separate type of document from the specific plan. The specific plan, as you know, is a land use document. A redevelopment plan is something entirely different. Some of the errors were technical. We noted, for example, that some of the acres on the specific plan number 11 were not quite accurate, although close, and we noted those differences. And then some of the findings were just contained legal errors. For example, one of the findings by the grand jury is that the Oversight Board, which is a public agency that helps with the winding down of the former RDA assets, is responsible for the disposition of the former RDA's properties. And that's technically not true. Under the dissolution law, there is a process that requires the successor agency, which is the city council, to approve a long-range property management plan that the Oversight Board will approve. And if the Oversight approves it, the Department of Finance will also have to approve it. So we noted some of those technical errors. So we noted some of those technical errors and legal errors. In particular, though, the one recommendation that the grand jury has made is that they recommend that the city sell the lakes' property and the West Side properties as well in order to pay down the debt of the former redevelopment agency. And our response to that recommendation is twofold. First, we feel it's premature to comment on what's the best way to dispose of those particular assets. There's the long-range management plan process. City staff is currently working with a consultant to draft that plan. That plan will come before the city sitting as successor agency in October or November. After that, it will go to the successor agency and the Department of Finance. At that meeting, it'll be a public meeting, and there'll be an opportunity for folks to weigh in on how those properties should be disposed. Also, what the grand jury is recommending can't be done under the law. Under the redevelopment law, the city cannot use any proceeds gained from the sale of those properties to pay down the redevelopment debt. It's the way the law is written. Any proceeds would have to be remitted immediately to the taxing entities, it's property tax. The city's or the former redevelopment agency's debt, there is a plan in place to pay those off as they come due, and I believe that the final payment is scheduled for 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. Mr. Adam?
Yes, thank you. You know, this whole business of the lakes and this recommendation by the grand jury to sell it, I can tell you right now that that would be a bad deal for the taxpayers of Thousand Oaks at this stage. The redevelopment agency of Thousand Oaks bought that property. Jerry Brand, the governor, dissolved the redevelopment agencies, therefore, the ownership of that property is in question, at least according to the state of California. If we were to follow the grand jury's advice now and sell that property, only 6% of the proceeds would go to the city of Thousand Oaks. The rest of it would go to the so-called taxing entities, which would be the county and the state of California. So that is not going to work for the citizens of Thousand Oaks. As Mr. Norman said, we need to create a long-range management plan, present it to the Department of Finance for that property, and then ultimately, and I'm confident, that the ownership of that property will revert to the city of Thousand Oaks and to you, the taxpayers. That's what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adam. I also would like to chime in. The, overall, the response to the grand jury, which we are required to do, is quite detailed. It clarifies a lot of certain misconceptions, and I thought overall, it was a very well put together response to the grand jury, with the exception of two items with which I disagree. And I just wanted to say, just for the record, not that we need to change the language or anything like that, but just for the record, I do disagree with items F I nine, whereas the developer has not paid rent due to the negotiated high threshold of return, which is 12%, which has not met. The city disagrees with that for reasons that perhaps, in terms of math, we didn't have the percentage correct, and it says that 12% was the market rate at the time. At that time, and there are only two council members here on the dais that were there, that was still considered a high return. So I would say that the grand jury in its item number F 109 is factually correct, that there is nothing really to disagree with, because the threshold still has not been met in 10 years. And also regarding item F 111, the agency selected a developer who had the specific expertise and the financial capability to complete the project. The agency failed to use best practices specifications. The city disagrees. I disagreed only with a portion, which is, I think the best practices was, the first one is to use communication, very good communication and transparency. It was so long ago, I mean, to rehash everything, I mean, I didn't have white hair back then, it was so long ago. And just for the record, the, with item number one, using transparency and best communication, that was, just speaking for myself, a little bit iffy at the time. So overall, I think this is a very good response to the grand jury, and I just wanted to state those two things for the record.
All right. Anything else? Okay, so you want to move that? I'll move seven F. Seven C. And we will need a voice vote. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Irwin? Councilmember Price? Councilmember Adam? Mayor Pro Tem Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Bill De La Peña?
Yes. Very good. Now we have item number O. Mr. Adam?
Yeah, periodically, the city has to replace equipment, just like any entity, and we had to replace two motorcycles that had reached their, the end of their life, and I'm happy to report that Newbury Park dealership is going to sell the city those two motorcycles. And they're going to sell the city the motorcycles because they took advantage of the 5% preference deal that we give to local businesses. It simply means that any bid we get from a local business, we reduce by 5% in the competitive bidding process. There was another dealership in Hollister, California, that bid to replace those two motorcycles. Without the 5% preference, they would have got it. But with the 5% preference, we kept the business here in Thousand Oaks. So if any of you own local businesses out there, we really want to do business with you, we want to keep it here local. Take advantage of the 5% preference rule so we can do business with our local residents. Thank you.
Would you like to move that item?
I'd like to move that item.
Okay, a voice vote. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Irwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Price? Councilmember Adam? Mayor Pro Tem Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Bill De La Peña?
Yes. Item P is housekeeping purposes, and that deals with the swap meet. It was a 3-2 vote, and as a result, I will have to vote against it because I was one of two who voted for the swap meet and against the main motion. The swap meet. Item P. You were the other one?
I'll move item P.
Okay, thank you. And then, please vote.
Yes.
Councilmember Price?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Bill De La Peña?
No, thank you. All right. Do you need to read that, Mrs. Madam Clerk?
No, that's a resolution.
Okay, very good. Item R, and that was Mr., was it Mr. Price? Okay.
Yes, with respect to the taxi cab ordinance in section 4-2.07 subsection 5, there was some discussion during the first reading where we removed the crimes of assault and battery, or battery, and I think that they were inadvertently placed in here. Madam City Attorney?
That's, that's correct. At the, when we did the first reading, we made a verbal modification to eliminate the assault and battery charges as a prohibition on getting the taxi permits. It was inadvertently left in there, so if you adopt it tonight under second reading, those words will be removed because that's what was approved for the first reading.
And with that, with the removal of those two crimes and words, I would move approval of seven R.
Thank you. Mr. Price? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Irwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Price?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Fox?
Here.
Mayor Pro, Mayor Pro Tem? Bill De La Peña?
Yes.
And the ordinance title is an ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter II of the municipal code in its entirety by adopting new licensing and operating regulations for taxicabs.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We now move to item 8A, which is a public hearing of our 2014 to 2021 final housing element update. That's 8A. Madam Clerk?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider, agenda item 8A, the 2014 to 2021 final housing element update. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. All documents for city council and the official city record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Nineteen people have presented cards and pursuant to council standards. Speakers will have two minutes each, and the yellow card will be displayed when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, and this case will be presented by our senior planner, Mr. Jeff Spector. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. We're here tonight to adopt the 2014-2021 housing element update. It's an amendment to the general plan of the city of Thousand Oaks, one of the mandatory elements of the general plan. And it's the one element that state law, under state law, is required to be updated periodically. This one covers January 1st of 2014 to October 31st of 2021. The content of the document, it includes an assessment of housing needs, and an inventory of land and financial resources for housing, an analysis of constraints to the development of housing, a review of the accomplishments of the previous housing element, previous time period, as well as housing programs for this element. And I'd like to summarize the results of those sections. We learned in this analysis, not a surprise to anyone, that the growth in housing is slowing, and you can see in the city, in the decade of the 1990s, we had a 12% roughly growth rate, and then in 2000, 2010, a little more than 8%. And most of that growth occurred in the early part of that decade. Another result that was identified is that the percentage of non-family households throughout the city is increasing. We noted that families without children under 18 has increased from 2000, 37 to 39%. Number of singles, or percentage of singles living alone, has increased, and the median age of the city has increased from almost 38 years, 38 years in 2000 to a little more than 41 years in 2010. Another finding has to do with the income throughout the city. As you can see from this bar graph, the median income in the city is relatively high. There are many people make, households making more than $75,000 a year, but there's still a considerable number who make less than that amount. And even though the median household makes a decent living, there are still many in the city who are overpaying for housing, and the problem of overpayment is particularly acute if you look at the first four, excuse me, three bar graphs, for those people who are, earn less than, or households that earn less than $50,000 a year, and renters are affected more significantly than owners. Now, to address the affordability issue, over the years, the city has been able to, with its affordable housing partners, to develop quite a number of affordable units, and there's more than 1,000. They are mostly managed by the area housing authority, or many mansions, although there are also private entities as well. And in addition to those projects, 565 households receive a Section 8 voucher. This is just a picture of some of the, a few of the affordable housing developments in the city. The housing element also discusses the problems that are peculiar to those people that are homeless, and we had in 19, in 2012, we had 90 people who were counted on the streets or in shelters, and 41 of them were on the street. And I should point out that in 2013, there was 121 people counted, 44 of them on the We also noted that almost 15% of the population are 65 or older, at least in 2010, and we know that that percentage is increasing, and we have quite a number of individuals who are 75 years or older. The housing needs, another category is persons with disabilities, and in the census surveys, over 11,000 people reported that they had a disability. But this particular update is, was required by state law to evaluate the need for persons with developmental disabilities, and we, through the Tri-County Regional Center, learned that there was almost 400 people with developmental disabilities living in the city. Another thing that has to be addressed, and was addressed in the housing element, is the city's share of the regional housing need. All cities and counties must accommodate the share that's allocated by the state and the Southern California Association of Governments, all the way down to the city level. And not only do we get a number, but we get separate numbers by income category. The city's not required to build that housing, but it must have sites with appropriate zoning to allow that housing to be built. For example, the default density for very low and low-income housing is 30 dwellings per acre. So in order to determine what the target allocation that the city needs to meet, we had to take to account the current allocation, and that's the second row there, the current reina. But we also had to, per state law, add the unmet need from the previous period, where we were unable to rezone enough land to meet the reina from the last period, and we were required to add it to this period. So as you can see, the total dwelling units for this housing element is 244 dwellings. So what we needed to do was to determine whether we had sufficient land in order to meet that, that housing need allocation, and we looked at approved projects, underutilized sites, which are basically sites for which the existing development doesn't use the full capacity of the site. For example, a large lot with a single-family house that can accommodate more units. We also took an inventory of vacant land, and we analyzed a pending project. On top of that, we had to look at the financial resources that are available to help us with our housing. The result, as far as the land inventory, we compared the land inventory to the city's reina allocation, and as you can see, in all cases, we have the capacity for housing in excess of our allocation. With respect to funding, many of us here know that redevelopment agency throughout, in the city and throughout California, all agencies were dissolved in 2012, and that funding is no longer available. It was the primary source of funding in the past for affordable housing. But there remain some federal sources, although much smaller, block grants, Section 8 vouchers, and developers can take advantage of tax credit financing. And then we have some local sources. We have an endowment fund, social services endowment fund, endowment, excuse me, and we have an affordable housing trust fund, although the balance is small. We also required for the housing element to analyze constraints on housing, and those include governmental and non-governmental, and we determined that the governmental constraints were not significant, and just the cost of land and the cost of construction was the major constraint. We evaluated the accomplishments of the previous housing element, and we found that most of the programs were accomplished, including zoning for emergency shelters and a number of those programs. And a number of those programs could not be completed due to the dissolution of the redevelopment agency. This Housing Element update contains 14 programs. And most of them are just continuation of the previous programs. But we have a few new programs. For example, to encourage our affordable housing providers to give special priority to the needs of people with disabilities, to manage the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and determine whether resetting these inclusionary housing and non-residential linkage fees is appropriate. As far as the review steps that must be taken, all housing elements throughout the state are required to go through a review with the Department of Housing and Community Development. We did go through that review with the draft document. And the state sent us a letter saying that our draft complies with the law. And then, once this element is adopted, they will have 90 days to certify that same conclusion. And I'd like to point out that the planning commission made a recommendation to the council to approve this Housing Element update. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of Mr. Spector? Mr. Adam?
Good evening, Mr. Spector. Yeah, I was just looking at the action plan on page 99. I think there are a couple of very good actions that have been delineated there. For one, that we need to take a look at the in-lu fees. For those of you who don't know, because of the redevelopment agencies being disbanded, we don't have the money that we used to. And we're going to have to depend more and more on our Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And the way we fund that, or it's been funded traditionally, is developers who are building have been asked to build affordable housing. And if they aren't willing to do that, they pay some cash in lieu of that. And that goes into the trust fund, and then we use that to build affordable housing. And, you know, it's been waived for the last five years because of economic conditions, rightly so, because we've been in quite a slump. But we need to, we need to take a look at that again. But anyway, that was just a comment. The question I had, you know, the report seemed to really stress seniors, and the fact that, you know, median age is 41 years versus 36 years in the county. 45 of the population is, 45% of the population is 45 years or older. 30% of the population is in the 45 to 64-year-old age group. So the baby boomers are going to be moving into their twilight years, golden years, I shouldn't say twilight years. So with that in mind, on this action step number two, where it says manage affordable housing to finance preservation, rehabilitation, affordable housing, and give priority to low-income households, would we want it, because of the stress on seniors in this report, would we want to add seniors to that list?
We could.
I mean, if we're going to give priority, it's the word that sticks with me, priority.
Yeah. This, Eldra Lee is there? Yeah, in another section, we have seniors. I can tell you how this was derived. When we sent our first draft to the state, they felt that we weren't strong enough to address the needs of extremely low-income individuals. And they wanted us to add some discussion and a program that speaks specifically to them, that group, as priority. And this was in response to the state's request.
I see, I see. Well, I think what we're going to see is that a lot of low-income households are going to be seniors. You know, I mean, if the population's moving that way. So, and because it's the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is one of our biggest sources of affordable housing funding, it just occurred to me that we might want to include that special needs group in there. I know they're mentioned in number six.
Yes.
About elderly households, but it's not in conjunction with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So, that's my thought there. Other than that, the report was great. I learned a lot, very, very, very illuminating.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, I do have a question. The, Mr. Spector, could you, since we have so many people here tonight from the Hillcrest neighborhood, can you show us a map and show us where many of these projects that have been built or are about to be built are in Thousand Oaks?
Well, the, on Hillcrest, there's a project on the, a pending project on the south side of Hillcrest. But there are many other projects, maybe not low-income housing projects, but other sites, where we have approved projects. They're in the report, and they're scattered throughout the city.
Do you have a slide to show us where these projects are?
I don't have the slide of it.
Do you have a slide of the list of proposed parcels that could, that are so-called infill parcels that lend themselves to being developed with subsidized housing?
I don't have the slide, just in the document.
Okay, so that's in the document, okay. All right. Yeah, I was also noticing, according to the census, the large number of seniors that we have in the community, and they will need some sort of housing. All right. Then I will call the speakers, we do have 19 of them. No, I did ask a question. Oh, you do have a question, okay, go ahead.
No way. Mr. Spector, I noted in your report, I was just commenting with Mrs. Irwin, that at least in 2010, almost 40% of the demographic for housing does not have children, not families, at least not living with them anyway. It's 2013, we're moving into 2014. Does staff any, any kind of sense on, is that trend moving up? Is it moving down? Is it related to the housing market and the economics of the time? I think that's an important question for the council as we look at what remaining housing opportunities we have, as limited as they are.
I don't have specific studies that show that, but I could say my feeling is, and what I've been reading from indirect sources, is that trend has continued. And it certainly is related to the cost of housing that's appropriate for families, and also people moving to where there's the best employment opportunities relative to the cost of living.
So is it fair to say that, well, let me ask this. Is there a way to, to have a study prepared without, you know, spending a lot of money? Is that something maybe we can ask Cal Lutheran or Pepperdine, some of the graduate students to look at? So council could get a snapshot? Because to me, this was a fairly alarming number. When you talk about 40% of the households in our community do not have children living in them. I think we consider ourselves a bedroom community, but that's statistically not the case. There's a lot of empty bedrooms. I just know from the council, our kids are getting older, they're moving out, they're going to college, with the exception of the mayor. We are all kind of representative of the demographic of Thousand Oaks. And I think that's, that is important information for council to look at as we look at the very scarce remaining housing needs or opportunities that we have within our city. Maybe Mr. Mitnick is in a position to comment on that. Is there an opportunity to do some outreach with some of the local university graduate programs to see if they can do a study?
Staff, Madam Mayor, members of council staff would be happy to look into that and report back.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Right. Thanks.
I just wanted to point out, for the record, that we have about 60 parcels identified as having potential or redevelopment potential. And those are all in the Old Town area and Los Feliz area and so forth. But that is all in the Housing Element update. So are there any additional questions? If not, then I will call the public speakers. Mel Silberberg, followed by Rick Schrader and Trudy Shapiro.
Thank you, Mayor De La Peña and council members and staff. This last conversation was a breath of fresh air, believe me. You're going in the right direction of looking at what the composition of the city is. That's the key. All the, I mean, my remarks to Jeff and to the Housing Element has been, we're not really taking into account the demographics. The demographics, and as you look further, they get worse. I mean, the numbers are fabulous. And I think the suggestion of having staff and local folks look into this, and I'd be happy to work on that with them, and so would the council on aging and the Samp Housing Committee, that's exactly where, that's the direction. That's really where this thing is going. And so I was going to make some comments on that, and you've already, you've preempted me, and I'm very happy that.
Great minds think alike.
Yeah, thank you, sure, okay. Anyway, but I will support, I would like to support, in addition to the comments that I made officially, which I was just going to quote again, and I don't have to, I want to refer to the letter from Kathy Brodnicki in Thousand Oaks. We all know Kathy, who's done such great work with somebody on homeless, on the homeless problem, et cetera, et cetera, you know. And, you know, the homeless are also God's children. So anyway, she said, quote to Jeff, "Dear Jeff, I know you are going to work with the number you assigned by SCAG, but I have to challenge it. It is simply too small. Our city needs more than 16 dozen housing units. And the low-income population definitely needs more than 72 units, especially since 26% of the Thousand Oaks residents qualify as low-income." And I didn't even realize that, I mean, 26%. So, the silver tsunami has approached. It's coming. And I think we need a big enough wall so that we don't lose sight of that.
Thank you, Mr. Silverberg, Silver Burke. Rick Schrader with Many Mansions, followed by Trudy Shapiro and Nancy Adamsic or Adamsic?
Madam Mayor, my name is Rick Schrader. I'm president of Many Mansions. As you know, Many Mansions is a nonprofit affordable housing and service provider located in Thousand Oaks. On behalf of Many Mansions, we do stand in support of the adoption of the Housing Element. In particular, its support for and commitment to affordable housing. There are two areas that I do think we need perhaps a greater discussion and analysis of. One is the actual need for affordable housing in the community, especially for our senior, growing senior population, and the type of housing that seniors need. But the other issue is the impact of the dissolution of the redevelopment agency. I know it's discussed in the Housing Element, but I think a little bit more discussion as to how we can go forward developing new affordable housing without the redevelopment agency. We do disagree with using the RENA numbers of only 142 low-income and very low-income units needed. Our own Many Mansions waiting list shows we have over 507 households from the City of Thousand Oaks in Newbury Park who are extremely low-income and very low-income, looking for housing, many of those who are seniors. So the need clearly is more than the 147. But what type of housing do we need? I think Mr. Fox is correct that seniors, our growing senior population, need different kinds of housing. What type of housing? So I think maybe more discussion on that. You know, there's only been one senior housing complex, low-income senior housing complex, that's been developed in the city in the last 30 years. And that's going to have to change. So in conclusion, we strongly support the adoption of the Housing Element. These are challenging times for affordable housing. Other than our existing project that's going through the system, we don't have any other planned projects in Thousand Oaks. And we're not really sure that we can go forward with any new developments. So I think that needs to be discussed. But still, we're here, we're a community resource, we're here for the community, and we look forward to working with the community and the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader. Trudy Shapiro, followed by Nancy Adamsic, and I apologize if I mispronounced the name, and Jim Wolfe.
My name is Trudy Shapiro. I live in Thousand Oaks, just off East Hillcrest. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. First, let me say I am a senior citizen. Many of my neighbors on East Hillcrest Drive are senior citizens. It is not us against other seniors looking for a new place to live. When I purchased my home 17 years ago, it was the first home I had ever purchased on my own. I saved, I worked very hard, I'm still working very hard, to be able to buy and live in a Thousand Oaks neighborhood that I felt would be safe and provide a good quality of life. I was careful, I was cautious, I thoroughly checked into the zoning for the area. I felt reassured with the knowledge that zoning for East Hillcrest Drive was predominantly single-family residential. Just a few years back, Many Mansions requested and was granted a zoning change on East Hillcrest Drive for their project, Hillcrest Villas. The density of our neighborhood increased substantially from the original city plans. Neighbors objected, but our voices seemingly went unheard by city council. In addition, concessions were made to Many Mansions. We were originally told it would be for low-cost housing. Eventually, it was called for the new homeless. Now Many Mansions is requesting another zoning change, just a short distance from their other development, right on Hillcrest again. Why there? I wonder if there are any projects set down right in the middle of the President of Many Mansions neighborhood or the neighborhoods of any of our city council members? If not, why not? To say we are closer to Thousand Oaks Boulevard does not seem like a valid point. Many Mansions says there will be buses to transport their residents to needed facilities. I tell the students that I teach that their reasons need to be based on facts. Please consider the current residents of the neighborhoods surrounding East Hillcrest. If this latest project goes through, I believe many of my current neighbors, many senior citizens, I might add, will be looking to move to an area where their city government protects their rights. Unfortunately, they will be looking to move with diminished property values, due largely to increased density brought on by a large facility dropped down into a neighborhood of single-family homes.
Thank you. Nancy, followed by Jim Wolfe. And please stick to the two-minute time limit since we have so many of you speaking here tonight. Jim Wolfe, and then Lisa Daly.
I have some maps I've asked her to share with you. And I would personally like to hand you a map because we've got where they are within a one-and-a-half-mile radius. Madam Mayor and City Council members.
Can you please step closer to the microphone? Thank you.
I got my jock voice on, sorry. Madam Mayor, City Council members, city staff, and citizens of the community. It's my understanding that zoning within a community is set up.
I'm sorry, could you please state your name for the record?
Nancy Adamsic. I live in East, on East Hillcrest as well. Thank you. It's my understanding that zoning within a community is set up to provide balance for a community, and in this case, the City of Thousand Oaks. Random rezoning changes the character of a community and upsets that balance. I'd like to share a map with the city council members and any of our housing people. And I have a whole stack of maps, if anybody else cares to see. There are currently 17 highlighted existing facilities within a one-and-a-half-mile area along the Hillcrest corridor in Thousand Oaks. 13 existing. Seven of these are Many Mansion facilities. Here are the number of units for the, well, the total number of units in the. Here are the number of units for the, well, the total number of units in those seven is 464 units. Proposing another 82 just further down Hillcrest will give us over 546. We keep being told that there's a mandate to provide housing for more and more low-income and homeless individuals in our community. Are these individuals all from Thousand Oaks? Absolutely not. If Thousand Oaks is mandated, what about the mandate for Westlake, for Agora, for Oak Park, for Newbury Park? Zero low-income units in these cities. Why, for one-and-a-half-mile distance, are there 13 already? As a teacher for 40 years, I'd like to leave you with three definitions from our good friend Webster to ponder. Cluster: A number of light things grouped together as in a bunch. Congested: To fill to excess. Overcrowded: To bring together and pile up. And balance: Equality in amount, the pleasing harmony of various elements.
Thank you. Jim Wolfe, followed by Lisa Daly and John Baresi.
Madam Mayor and Council and Staff, my name is Jim Wolfe. And according to the Planning Commission, which we sincerely respect, and I know Jeff knows that, there is no requirement for the Thomas Terrace LLC further, to further clutter the Hillcrest Villas community, Los Villas community. What is more, anyone who had any compassion whatsoever for a senior community, they certainly would not consider the inappropriate location at 2080 Hillcrest. And they certainly would not employ the ruse of senior housing for a complex that's designed for 55-year-old, for the 55-year-old demographic, which is a working demographic. For very obvious reasons, no city concentrates low-income housing, so why is the city not looking at alternative sites? For example, in the final Housing Element Plan, pages 107 and 108, A1 in the appendix, there are eight sites of two acres or larger, which are already approved and not yet built upon. On pages 109 to 115, A2 in the appendices, there are 42 sites of two acres or more, which are vacant land. Therefore, we ask that you make an alternative analysis for the needs of retired low-income seniors who have served this community and simply wish to maintain their dignity and to locate facilities in more logical and friendly areas. Thank you again for your attention.
Lisa Daly, followed by John Baresi and Iris Kerrigan.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Daly, and I am a 46-year resident of the Caneo Valley. I grew up in Newbury Park, and now I live on East Hillcrest Drive, directly across from the Hillcrest Villas. When we purchased our home, we knew that there was going to be a Many Mansions facility there, but we were hoping that it would be a good thing for the community, and unfortunately, it's just, it's just not in the right place, surrounded by single-family homes. There's a lot of loitering outside, on the sidewalk. It's not being kept up in front, a lot of weeds, and it's just very, it's just not the right, it's not the right place for that type of facility. So, I'm here today with a bunch of other residents who live on East Hillcrest to tell you that we are definitely against rezoning on Hillcrest Drive, the two different parcels that you have that are being considered for multifamily, multi-unit facilities. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. John Baresi, followed by Iris Kerrigan and Mr. or Mrs. Nordblum.
Hi, John Baresi, City of Thousand Oaks. I don't want to be repetitive here about diminished values, but that's what's happening. And if you take 300 to 500 homes in this area off of Hillcrest between Herbs, Caneo School, eventually, the values of the properties are going to go down. Maybe $200,000 a home. You're looking at $1 million in diminished value and property taxes for city, for the county, and for the state. It's a lot. Also, I would invite everyone, the mayor and the city council, to come on my street, Lone Oak Drive, one morning at 8 o'clock, come at 3 o'clock, and come at 5 o'clock. And we'll have a time trial to see how fast you can get, make a left-hand turn on Hillcrest. It's between 3 and 5 minutes, and it's dangerous. And if you put another Many Mansions across the street and the senior assisted-living facility there, it's going to be impossible to get out of our street. It's horrible right now. Thank you.
Iris Kerrigan, followed by Georgia Nordblum and Kathy Goodspeed. I'm sorry, Goodspeed.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us speak to this issue. My name is Iris Kerrigan. I live at, on Lone Oak Drive in Thousand Oaks. I've been a resident of this Caneo Valley, beautiful area, for more than 45 years. Of course, I'm only about 46, right? But anyway, my husband and I have both been very well involved in this community, as many of you know, for all the years that we've been here in many different ways, and including active in Many Mansions, which is a wonderful organization. However, I come here to oppose this particular project of Many Mansions. We live on Lone Oak Drive, we've lived on Lone Oak Drive for more than 33 years. If you or any of your council members are really familiar with Lone Oak Drive, it's approximately one-half block away from this proposed project, and all of the houses on Lone Oak are custom homes. Now, Mr. Baresi just announced or addressed the issue of lower property values, and I do believe that's going to happen. And that's going to mean a decrease in revenue to this city. But I am appalled to hear that not only do we have currently at least 17 to 19 current projects within a one-to-one-and-a-half-mile radius of my street that is low-income, but now that I see that there are 60, six-zero, proposed, and all of them are within this same vicinity. I don't understand that. The city is mandated, I understand that, to have low-income housing, but it's not mandated to have it all in the same place. What is wrong with this picture? What is wrong with this picture, folks? I don't believe that any of you on here would want even a couple of them in your neighborhood within a mile radius, but to have 60, or currently 17 to 19, within one-mile radius? I don't think so. So, please reconsider, find other ways, and I have an idea, maybe encourage developers to start having granny flats by underwriting in some way. There's an idea. Have you looked at that? That's a better way to house seniors.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
Georgia Nordblum, followed by Kathy Goodspeed and William Oaks.
Yes, my name is Georgia Nordblum. I live at the Ranch Mobile Home Park, and the plan to build Many Mansions behind us off of Hillcrest would not only deter, I mean, deteriorate us more than we've already been, thanks to Andrew Fox. We, we do not, we are elderly. We can't breathe. We won't, I mean, we have all that dust that's going to get all over our mobile homes, our cars, not to mention our lungs, who, and people who are on oxygen, which I am also, that can't survive. All that dust and all that noise and all that, that's going to be built behind us. We've already got them on the side of us, across the street from us. We have our, we have graffiti on our walls. When I moved here at the Many, at the Ranch, the kids were kids. Now, they're teenagers. They're farming gangs. You can, you can see drugs being sold on our Los Villas Drive. Police are there all the time. They throw firecrackers into our park and, and, never mind. Just please, don't let them build another Many Mansions.
Kathy Goodspeed, followed by William Oaks and Barbara Andrews.
Kathy Goodspeed, Thousand Oaks, City Council and Staff. Please do not fall for the fallacy that these apartments are for low-income seniors. The 55-year-old working class, which can afford $900 to $1,200 a month for rent, is not a low-income senior. What is really needed are senior complexes for real seniors, those in retirement. Elderly widows who have worked hard their entire lives, but who have been unable to obtain private retirement monies. They're from a generation which left them out of higher-paying jobs. They raised families, they waited on you in restaurants, they checked you out of grocery store lines. Men, too, can lose their monies from cancer, from horrible debilitating medical things, and this leaves them as a low-income senior. But they are not making 900, they can't pay $900 to $1,200 a month in rent. The average social security for a low-income senior is $1,250. You take away that from $900 or $1,200, you have $300 maybe to pay for medicine and food? I don't think so. Please think about this, and do not rezone this area.
William Oaks, followed by Barbara Andrews and Vic Abruzzo.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. My name is William Oaks. I live on, right off of East Hillcrest Drive on Glenwood Place. The City of Thousand Oaks in providing housing with Many Mansions conflicts with the citizens of Thousand Oaks' ability to get an unbiased hearing and vote. The City of Thousand Oaks has recently loaned a substantial amount of money to the developer Many Mansions for pre-development work such as engineering, architectural design, and environmental studies for a housing complex before the project has been approved to be built and voted on on a public hearing. The city and the developer have a lot of control in this process, and the citizens have an impression that all is fair and balanced during the site approval process. It seems a conflict interest has occurred because the city is already financially involved in the project. What entity or person would cancel their own loan, especially when money is already being spent on the project? To avoid such a conflict interest, the funding should not come from the city, or at least not until after a public hearing, to prove the development has taken place. Now, the developer, now the developer and city have all kinds of reasons and excuses for the Many Mansions altered process, and I want to forget the excuses. The people in Thousand Oaks and I want a fair procedure. Other developers participate in the processes intended where the city does not have a financial connection. If a non-government-related developer wanted to build on the same parcel of land, the process and hearing would be impartial, and both sides would have a chance. Nevertheless, to our knowledge, all Many Mansion developments have been approved. This is not fair and balanced. In the Planning Commission meeting that occurred on July 26, the clustering of the developments was brought up. The Planning Commission stated it was not the intent of the city to place all the high-density complexes in one area of the city. However, this is occurring. It also stated in the Planning Commission meeting that just because an open piece of land is available does not mean it's the right spot for a development. In referring to the Many Mansions development in the planning meeting, Jeff Spector said it's not necessary to meet our housing needs assessment number. So, we have a community that doesn't want the development, a city planning department representative that states it's not needed, and a parcel of land in the middle of all this, and it's not even owned by the developer yet. Our community has done its fair part to help the City of Thousand Oaks with its housing goals, and now we're doing our part to save our community, and we're hoping our community, hoping you'll help our community, too.
Thank you, Mr. Oaks. Barbara Andrews, followed by Vic Abruzzo and Fred Fukunaga.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Andrews, and I'm a resident of the Hillcrest, East Hillcrest area. When I purchased my property two years ago in the Hillcrest community, I was aware of the Many Mansions projects, and I was told that it was for abused women, that there would be a full-time onsite manager, and that the women would take classes in child development and childcare. After the Many Mansions project was built, I started looking, where are the women and where are the children? And I called Many Mansions myself and spoke with an employee. He said it was never the purpose to have women. They said 30 units are for very low income, and 30 are supportive units for the homeless and mental disabilities. I asked how many are Thousand Oaks residents? They said, oh, none, that we take people from all over the United States. Next, I checked on the Many Mansions website. They said that they have, quote, "a close public and private partnership between Many Mansions and Thousand Oaks." They also say, quote, "that they have widespread community support," unquote. My question is this: The City of Thousand Oaks should not be sponsoring any organization that is helping residents from all over the United States and not focusing on Thousand Oaks residents. Number two, my big question is, why does Many Mansions believe that they have a, quote, "private relationship," unquote, with public officials? Many Mansions does not have widespread community support. As a Hillcrest resident and a voter in every single election, no matter how big or how small, and my guess is, my fellow residents and neighbors will also be voting every single election, rezoning for the Many Mansions project or any other multifamily project on Hillcrest, which has already impacted with 13 low-income projects in a 1.5-mile radius, should not be permitted, and I request that the council respectfully vote no on rezoning. Thank you.
We have next up Vic Abruzzo, just for the record as well, not all of the projects highlighted on here have been built by Many Mansions. Mr. Abruzzo, followed by Fred Fukunaga and Patricia Christian.
Hi, thank you, Madam Mayor, and in reply, I will note that I was on for item six, but since I've been moved to this item, I will try and address it. As a first point, with respect to the element, you could immediately have created 70-some-odd, very low-income, super senior units merely by reinstituting the protections that were afforded to Ranch Mobile Home Park and were taken away. What really adds insult to injury to, with respect to that, is an article by Dan Walters in The Star suggests that the only basis for the fair and reasonable has substantially been debunked since there are so many rental units. Rather than go further on that issue, I will leave copies for all of you here with the clerk. When you speak about the units that are being proposed now, I would ask that you take from sequoia the concept of compounding and acknowledge that between the Hydam project, the new Many Mansions project, the existing projects, the projects in construction on Los Villas, you have a compounding issue by concentrating these facilities for seniors, low-income, and assisted-living, all in one part of the community. Had you been in the Planning Commission meeting last night, you would have heard the number of property owners who are ready to leave if all of this impacts their community. And believing that history is important, I would suggest to you a look at North Las Vegas. When the owners left and couldn't find tenants, the area downgraded within a matter of a few years. That's what you have to look forward to from a nonprofit that's not generating you any property tax. As a property owner here in Thousand Oaks, I hope you will look at all of these together and take a careful, long-range view. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred Fukunaga, followed by Patricia Christian and Gonzalo Gonzalez.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, thank you. It's an honor to speak for you. I appreciate it. Again, my name is Fred Fukunaga. My wife and I have lived in Thousand Oaks for the last 17 years. We live approximately one mile due east of the 2080 parcel that's up for rezoning. I'd like to give you some visual aids as I'm speaking really quickly. If you would please visualize this, I stood today in front of that parcel. As I'm standing-- As I'm standing in front of the sign that you read there that proposes rezoning for the property from low residential, low-density, to high-density residential, an 82-unit apartment complex for senior housing. I looked at the property, and to my left were four single-family homes, on the right, five approximately single-family homes, and directly to the rear, a small mobile home complex. And back of all that, I see the Santa Monica Mountains. Now, picture yourself the homeowner of any one of those single-family residences, abutting an 82-unit, and I understand it's a three-story apartment complex. Would you want to live there? Would you want to buy that property knowing that complex is going to be in there? In addition, as others have mentioned, directly across the street on Hillcrest is a proposed assisted-living complex. I happened today to talk to a resident who lived just down the street in a very, very nice complex on Old Conejo Road, very high-dollar complex. He is livid about what is happening. The home property values are going to be greatly affected. Lastly, the traffic. Yesterday, I took a photo at 4:20 PM. Cars were in queue 17-deep. Mr. Oakes back here sent me a photo today, and you can see it there. Traffic backed up to Old Conejo School Road. That's a distance, I marked it off, of four-tenths of a mile to the intersection of Herbs and Hillcrest. It's only going to get worse if this development is built, I suspect. I love Thousand Oaks. I love the quality of life here. Please vote no to this to maintain the quality of life that we have. Thank you very much.
Patricia Christian, followed by Gonzalo Gonzalez and Kay Sikra.
Hi, my name is Patricia Christian, and I live in Thousand Oaks, and I've been a resident for 31 years, and in the same home, and we butt up right next to 2080 Hillcrest Drive. I live on a flag lot, so there's three homes on that street. Four years ago, we bought the house next door for our son and his wife, and now we own two of those homes, and they are going to be looking down on us. And I am appalled that this is happening because we are surrounded by single-family homes from Conejo School Road to Herbs Road. And I take my grandson and walk down those roads, and just the idea of what is changing in this whole town is making me want to leave this area. And I have loved this town, and I just want to say that please do not allow this to happen on both sides of Hillcrest. When we go out of our driveway, the assisted living is proposed, and next door to us, we're surrounded. And please, please, please vote no on this rezoning. Thank you.
Gonzalo Gonzalez, followed by Kay Sikra and Roy Brasher.
Good evening. I don't want to repeat, I agree with what has been said, but I'm just reading at some pages of the Housing Element update, 2014-2021. So on page 57, it talks about zoning designations. Says zoning regulations serve to, and then among other things, preserve the character and integrity of existing neighborhoods. And I think that's at the center of a planning document. Now, I am a researcher, so when I bought my house, I liked to research, I liked to see what, so everything around Herbs, between Herbs and Conejo, everything, 100% single-family residences. We are surrounded by many overcrowded neighborhoods, but this part is all residences. Now, there are two empty lots, actually three. One is already being built with estate homes. All of them are going to be priced higher than a million dollars in the corner of North Conejo and Herbs. However, it's on hold because I understand the developer says, "Who's going to buy my houses if these other developments are being built?" Now, I'm going to the appendices where it says the inventory of land, just to give you an idea of what we see when we saw these lots. So in the item, site ID number 35, corner of Hillcrest Drive, Lone Oak, this is for Hydam, and it says it has, it's for seven single-residence homes, it's low-density, income class above. And for the other, for 2080, sorry, 2802, well, it's Hillcrest, many mansions, it says estimated units nine, low-density, income class above. So just visualize yourself, you do your research, you trust whoever made this document, and I think it's important because that's why we are here today. And then you read, you make your decisions based on this, and boom, now you have 120 units in Hydam and 82 in many mansions. So just want you to consider that.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kay Sikra, Roy Brasher, and Bruce Bach.
Hi, it's an honor to speak. I'm the homeowner on, right on the corner where the Hydam project. We look down into our pool area.
Could you please state your name for the record?
Kay Sikra.
Thank you.
In Thousand Oaks. Also, just, we'll be right up against the many mansions project. They, in their proposal, said the only reason they want this property is because it's zoned low-density. They can buy it cheaper and then have it changed to high-density. They don't have enough money. Maybe if they weren't building so many, they would have enough money. I'm going to have to have an on-ramp to be able to get onto the road. So are my neighbors. They're going to put a bus right there. We won't be able to see to turn right. We won't be able to turn left. This is a big problem. Today, I came up Conejo School Road. They are building a 148-unit project right now on Los Feliz. It's under construction. Because of that construction, there are so many cars that the school was letting out, there was utter chaos there. A woman ran across the road, not where the guard crossing was, and I almost hit her. She popped out from cars where I was trying to squeeze through there. That's just with the construction. Imagine 148 more cars. And then we've got 82 more cars, or 95 more cars will be right next to us, and then, how many units is the Hydam project? 140 units? This is crazy. It's totally insane. My husband and I never would have bought this property. When we first moved here, we checked the zoning. It was low-density, family homes, and we are going to sell if this goes through. That's, I don't know who will buy our home, but it's worth it to us to lose money, to be away from it. There is...
Thank you. Thank you very much. Roy Brasher, followed by Bruce Bach.
I moved here 30 years ago. I'm a Realtor, and I was extremely proud that when I had clients coming in from other states or other cities, that I could pass out the information that Thousand Oaks was the safest city in the United States, safest large city. I was very proud of that fact for many, many years, and then I began to see a trend. I've bought or sold almost every house on Glenwood Place over the last 30 years, very familiar with the areas. One of the reasons why I started buying in there was because there was, that the homes were good but in deferred maintenance stage, so they could be bought reasonably. The city sent out this paperwork saying that this whole area was under urban renewal, so I bought in there. I bought those because they're under urban renewal. I fix them up, I'll be part of the city's renewal program. I'm a community activist. I have a jog-a-thon, two jog-a-thons. I have a golf tournament. We've raised over a million dollars in the last 20 years. 100% of that goes to the kids, for worthy students. I'm a supporter of community here. A homeless man lived behind my house for two years. I helped him get a job, I helped him work, my dentist got him teeth, I helped the community. But for the city to get a million dollars out of this project is insulting to me, that they would take and put this project, having two- and three-story buildings looking down in my backyard. I mean, Westlake says not in our backyard, they mean their city. When we say not in our backyard, we mean our backyard. And two- and three stories looking straight down at us, that's insane. Why would you even put it on the agenda as a project? Just, I will move.
Our last speaker is Bruce Bach.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for the opportunity. As a citizen of Thousand Oaks, I have lived in this community for six years. I am a senior. I'm a physician, and I've listened to my colleagues and my neighbors beseech you to be reasonable. There is no question that we have a hyper-concentration of high-resource utilization. I am greatly disturbed, as a taxpayer and regular voter, that I find that the City of Thousand Oaks, which looks so carefully at every expense, is fronting money to a developer who is essentially creating social discontinuity in the people who live here, who work here, and have a sense of community with the people who already live here, not the homeless from around the United States of America. This is about continuity. It's about listening to people who live here, who want to make this our homes. For those of us who are working seniors, it does matter if our property values go down. In fact, one might even argue that it is to the advantage of many mansions and others to force these large developments upon us so that they can purchase yet additional lands at lowered costs because they've essentially trashed our neighborhood. As a physician, I know that elderly persons require care. We're not talking about 82 individuals, we're talking about 82 individuals plus 82 caregivers plus people who are there for medications plus food service workers. You must actually spend some time on Hillcrest Avenue in the morning and try to make a left turn. It's not engineered for it, the sightlines aren't there. We are creating essentially a hyper-concentration of subsidizing, and I believe it is not in the interest of the community to continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Bach was our last speaker, and we can now turn to the council for any questions that you may have of staff. Mr. Mitnick?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, in response to some of the comments made, let's just, to make it clear and as a reminder, the agenda item with respect to the housing element has nothing to do with the proposed many mansions project, and at the earliest, that proposed project could come to council in November at the earliest. I'm sorry, getting used to the new setup here. So the adoption of the housing element will not result in the rezoning of the many mansions project, so we'll make that clear. And that, so sorry, there was confusion about that. The city's regional housing needs assessment, the RENA, that's the acronym we use, those requirements from the state are not contingent upon the many mansions project being approved or moving forward. Okay? And also, for those who spoke and other interested residents who have concerns about this proposed project, which is not on the agenda tonight, please be sure, and some of you have already done this, please be sure to provide your written comments to us, in particular to Will Chua, the planner who's working on this. Make sure he gets the written comments, so we can put those in the record when the project does come in front of the planning commission and/or city council. Again, it's not on the agenda tonight. Also, the residents are strongly encouraged to work with many mansions, and Rick Schrader is here, the executive director, and they're trying to hold some meetings with you, so if you can meet with them, that's your best avenue to make sure that the...
Excuse me, excuse me, can you please let Mr. Mitnick finish? Thank you.
That's the best avenue to make sure that the issues discussed here tonight are identified in order to be resolved before they go to the next step, which would be the planning commission. That's just an observation. The planning commission is tentatively set to hear this sometime in October, we're not sure, but that's continued upon many mansions moving forward with a proposed project. Then after whatever happens with the planning commission, that would come before the city council, possibly in November. So that's just it from a procedural standpoint. There were some other issues raised, and staff is available to answer those if city council desires. Hope that was helpful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mitnick. Comments? Mr. Fox?
I'm going to go ahead and move approval of the housing element, and I appreciate Mr. Mitnick's comments in clarifying that the approval of this housing element in no way impacts some of the issues that were raised from the public comment tonight on this item. I will say that, as I think has been pointed out by staff and has been recognized by the community, the housing element is required by state law. It is critical for the city's general plan. We are required to update it periodically. I think tonight, we heard some important information that the city is going to follow up on relative to what was perceived in terms of our housing need versus what the demographics and our surveys are telling us today. While the item is not on the agenda, and I don't think council should discuss it even to the level that city manager did, actually, I will say that issues of traffic, because there's also a circulation element, there's a number of things that we look at with respect to the general plan as it relates to our housing element, and many of the comments that we heard tonight are relevant. They are relevant to the general plan, they are relevant to the housing element, and they are certainly relevant to the specific item that was alluded to. So, and I'm just going to say that I think for us to go any further into discussing anything other than what's on the agenda tonight, we're going to be admonished by the city attorney rightly, so I just will say that we appreciate the comments of the residents as it relates to all the items that were brought to the council, and a lot of good points were made. So with that, I'm going to adopt, I'm going to move for the adoption of the 2014 through 2021 final housing element and the recommendations made by staff.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Are there any comments to the motion? Mr. Adams?
Yes, thank you. Many of you have been emailing the council members about this issue that you've been talking about tonight. I just want to assure you, we've been getting the emails, I've been reading the emails, and we are forwarding the emails to staff, and they will be included in the appropriate packet, whether it's the planning commission or the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to summarize already what both Mr.s Fox and Adams said, the actual zoning issue of the proposed many mansions project is not on the agenda tonight, but the topics that you touched upon are indirectly related to the housing element in that I think the council as a whole will have an opportunity to look at the concentration of certain units, but again, that is a discussion at a later time. And having said that, I move to, well, actually, we have a motion and ask for a vote or call for a vote.
Councilmember Irwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Price?
Yes.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Mayor Bill de la Pena?
Yes. Thank you. So that was item number 8A. We now move to item number 8B, which is another public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider, agenda item 8B, the fiscal year 2012-2013 Community Development Block Grant Program Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding this public hearing, and we do not have any cards on this item.
Thank you. And this will be presented by Senior Analyst Caroline Milton. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the city's annual public hearing for review of the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG program year, that ended on June 30. The city's CAPR report for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, was made available for 30 days of public review on the city's website, and a copy of that report was provided to council under separate cover with tonight's packet. No public comments have yet been received, but this public hearing provided a final public comment opportunity concerning the city's CAPR and/or the CDBG program. Expenses from the Community Development Block Grant must primarily benefit lower-income persons and households. Between July 1, 2012, and June 30, 2013, the city expended $1.4 million in federal funds for street and drainage improvements in the Old Town West neighborhood, west of Hampshire Road, and for the other activities as summarized in the staff report. Staff is requesting council's approval to submit the CAPR report to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and I am available to respond to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Milton. Are there any questions from council? Mr. Adam?
Good evening. This probably occurred before I came on the council, but it just struck me, with $1.6 million in Committee Development Block Grant funds, that the vast majority of it went to the street improvements in Old Town West, probably seventy-five, eighty percent of it. And, you know, according to the CAPR report, consolidated annual performance, I had thought that affordable housing was more of the, to be the focus of those funds, when, in fact, of course, it went on street improvements. And I understand that's a low-income area, and I can see the connection there, but I guess my question is, number one, why did so much of it go to that one area? And why was so much of it designated to something other than affordable housing?
Well, the city has rehabilitated a number of housing units over the last few years, affordable housing units using CDBG funds. So there has been probably over the last few years about a million dollars spent on rehabilitation of existing affordable housing units. And the $1.4 million, or I think it was actually $1.2 million for the, for the street and drainage improvements...
Yes.
That was money that was accumulated over the last seven or eight years from the CDBG funding.
I see.
Because about 10 years ago, the city identified that there was a lot of non-conforming infrastructure, a lot of problems with drainage, et cetera, in this neighborhood, which is one of the oldest neighborhoods in the city. So it was decided to invest some of the federal funds in upgrading the infrastructure there in that neighborhood.
I see. Okay, so it was an accumulation of the money over a period of time, six or seven years, versus all in one chunk in one year? Okay, got it. Answers my question. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? None? Okay, then I will, there are no public speakers, actually, for item eight B. Anybody interested in making a motion? Mr. Price?
I would move approval of eight B, staff's recommendation.
Okay, I want to make sure that I do close this particular public hearing, since I didn't close the last one. All right, now go ahead and, can you state your motion again, please?
Yes, I would move approval of item eight B, move staff's recommendation to approve the CAPR.
Thank you. Please vote. Madam Clerk? Councilmember Irwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Price?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Bill De La Pena?
Yes. Thank you. This is now our third public hearing, item eight C.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider. Agenda item eight C, it's a request to approve a single-story industrial building development permit, DP 2008-70122, and related mitigated negative declaration. General Plan Land Use Element Change, LU 2007-70388, from low-density residential to industrial. Zone Change, Z 2008-70630, from RE 13 PR, rural exclusive 13,000 square foot minimum lot, size protected ridgeline overlay, to M1 industrial park. Merger of three lots into a single lot of record, parcel map waiver 2008-70309. Transplanting one Toian landmark tree permit, 2008-70328, and one oak tree permit, 2008-70329. It's located at the east side of Conejo Ridge Road, 850 feet from Willow Lane. The applicant has compatible electronics. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council. We have three, excuse me, two speaker cards for this item. The applicant is allowed 15 minutes with a five-minute rebuttal, and the remaining speakers are allowed five minutes each.
Thank you, Mrs. Lawrence. Associate Planner Will Chua will do the presentation of this particular case.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. For your consideration tonight, it's a request to approve MND 288, approve legislative actions to change land use designation for one lot from residential to industrial, and to rezone three lots from RE 13 PR to M1, and entitlements consisting of a request to approve construction of industrial building, allow merger of three lots, and relocation of an Toian and an oak The subject property is comprised of three legal lots in the Thousand Oaks tract with a combined acreage of 1.43 acres. It is on the east side of Conejo Ridge Avenue and about 850 feet from Willow Lane. The subject property sits in the midst of other industrial and commercial establishments. Directly across the street from the site is the Conejo Spectrum parking structure. The site sits between industrial office and the PTS furniture site, and to the far end of Conejo Ridge Avenue is an RV storage facility. It is currently the only undeveloped property adjacent to Conejo Ridge Road. The proposed building will be sited on a flat, on the flat portion of the property, and the parking lot will be along the frontage, which has a slope greater than 25 percent. Two of the lots are currently shown as industrial in the general plan's land use element. The project will be used as a testing facility for certain electronic equipment requiring government certification. No other separate business will be present at the project. The building will have 7,963 square feet of floor space. A 35-feet-by-70-feet-wide pad will be graded at the far end of the property. The pad is necessary for outdoor testing of equipment as necessary. There will be no vehicle or structures that will be present at the pad. The building design is typical of other industrial buildings that have been approved in the past. It will have split concrete block for exterior walls. Planning Commission recommends approval of the proposed grade color of the building. The parking spaces will be located along Conejo Ridge Avenue where most encroachment of 25 percent slope will occur. There will be retaining wall as high as 25 feet at the back of the building. This similar approach was done with the adjacent building to reduce encroachment into the 25 percent natural slope. The next slide shows you the three separate lots that will be merged. Showing on the screen, Lot 18 will be the lot that is the subject of the land use designation change from residential to industrial. There are two legislative actions mentioned being proposed with the project, the land use designation and change, and the zone changes. Entitlement for the project approval requires parcel map waiver for merging the three lots into a single lot of record. The development permit is required for the building pad and the oak tree and landmark tree for the relocation of the oak and the Toian tree. The general plan amendment is necessary because Lot 18 is designated as low-density residential, and that needs to be changed to industrial for consistency. The zone change is necessary to change zoning from RE to protected ridg, RE Protected Ridgeline to M1. The general, approval of the general plan amendment will result in two less potential residential units, which is now going to be 407 units. This is the map showing you the, the general plan designation for the, for Lot 18. The zone change is requested to change the zoning for all three lots involved from RE 13 to M1. These lots are part of a parcel consisting of 10 legal lots. The rest of the lots will keep their existing zoning designation. The protected, the subject lot will lose its protected ridgeline designation because of the fact that the three lots are 300 feet away horizontally from, and 100 feet below a protected ridgeline. The requested zoning is consistent with the land use designation for two of the lots, Lot 16 and 17, and the proposed designation for Lot 18. Most properties along Conejo Ridge is zoned M1. This shows you the surrounding zoning on the property on Conejo Ridge Road. It shows that the subject property is the only pocket of development that's zoned as The development permit involves building and pad approval for the project. The building height is 31 feet with a setback of 100 feet from the middle, from the street center line. There will be 21 parking spaces to be provided, and they're required, the parking demand for the proposed buildings, 21 spaces. The project complies with the city's municipal code standards in general. Grading will require 18,000 cubic yards of export. The export is necessary to, to reduce encroachment into the 25 percent areas. The haul route for the export will require Public Works Department approval. The retaining wall of up to 25 feet is necessary because of the site's terrain. The tallest wall will be behind the building and will not be visible from the streets. This was the same approach done with the adjacent building, which is, with the adjacent building to reduce encroachment into 25 percent or steeper terrain. Staff is supporting this waiver because of its benefit of preserving natural slope, and at the same time, the walls will not be visible from public right-of-way. Access road for the project will require cutting into the slope with a height ranging from 10 feet to 33 feet, with a proposed slope ratio of one and a half to one. Code standard for slope limits heights to 25 feet and a maximum of two-to-one ratio. Waiver from this standard is necessary because of the limited developable area of the subject site, and because of the fact that this slope will be, will have limited visibility from the, from public streets. Approval of the waiver will allow the applicant to enjoy reasonable and conforming use of the property. This is, as I mentioned earlier, the same approach, and this is a picture of that building adjacent to the project site. Because of the project involves a processing of entitlement with legislative action, the municipal code requires that, the Planning Commission recommendation and council decision on the project. The Planning Commission conducted the hearing on July 22nd, hearing and recommended approval of the project, subject to the conditions proposed in the attached council resolutions. Now, it would be worth noting that staff instead is recommending removal of the trees instead of transplanting because of the low probability of survival. Staff is recommending that the council adopt MND 288 and approve the legislative actions and entitlements for the project. Staff is ready for answer, to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chua. All right, are there any questions for staff? Mr. Adam?
Good evening. The test, hello, the testing is outdoors, correct? The testing site?
I'm sorry, say that again?
The testing site is outdoors, then?
No, not necessarily. If most, the nature of the project is, the nature of the business is testing of electronic equipments indoors, but there will be times that they will need outdoor testing of equipment, so they don't have to go to the street and do their testing, they need that pad.
So they're just testing if the electronics work?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not anything...
No.
Big or booming?
No, no, these are basically portable equipment.
Got it, okay. And the second question is the business of this oak tree. You know, the report conflicts with the language. It seems to me that the applicant is willing to transplant the tree. In fact, it says it right on the front page here, transplanting of a Toian or an oak tree. Well, I'm only concerned about the oak tree at this point. But the city's saying, well, you know, the chances of survival aren't that great. You know, I know it's not going to make, I've seen the oak tree, I know it's not going to make the cover of Oak Tree Monthly or anything. It's not the most beautiful oak in the world, but it seems to me, if the applicant's willing to transplant it, why wouldn't we take them up on it?
Well, because of the fact that the oak tree is on a slope, and it's the terrain on that mountain, the natural terrain is rocky, transplanting will be difficult, because what you want to do when you transplant an oak tree is to find a similar location that has the same slope. So to find that slope on the property, or to transplant the tree, you're going to have to dig into a similar slope, and you have to provide access to that location if you identify one, and you have to dig in that area. So that will result in more encroachment into the 25 percent slope. So in order to preserve that slope, and because of small chance that, maybe 20 percent chances that the oak tree will survive the transplanting, it's worth just replacing them with newly-planted trees.
Yeah, I understand the logic, but we could always condition the applicant, if the transplant fails, to then go ahead and replace it with the trees. I mean, it just seems to me, if they're willing to transplant it, why wouldn't we not take them up on that offer?
Well, like...
It doesn't really matter what we think of whether the tree's going to make it or not. The fact remains that they're willing to transplant it, so let them take the risk to transplant it. I mean, and that there's lots of slopes around it. They could, they could box it while they're building and then replant it.
Right, yes, the point's well taken, but the, as far as the finding a suitable spot to have the same slope, to dig into that area, and if the tree dies anyways, then we have some disturbed 25 percent of greater slope. The approach is when if, if we decide to just remove the trees, we're not going to dig into any, into any natural slope, and we're going to have brand-new trees that will have much better chances of survival. That's, that was the reasoning.
I understand the reasoning. I really do. And as far as disturbing the 25 percent slope, the trunk of the oak tree is not that big. It's not really going to make a major, it's not like putting in a retaining wall or something like that. Again, it just seems to me, if they're willing to take the chance, it's not our position to judge them. Let them take the chance and plant the tree. And, you know, if it fails, then they'll give us the two, the two 24-inch boxes and the 136-inch box. It's not our position to judge whether or not it's going to live or die. You know, that's the chance that they'll take, and they are seemingly willing to do it. I mean, it's, I'd rather transplant an existing tree than destroying it.
I think that would be within the purview of the council to change that condition if you sought it. And you could possibly, after the applicant's provided their testimony on that topic, that would be helpful.
Okay, yeah, yeah. I'll listen to what the applicant said, but again, it clearly states in the oak tree report and in the staff report, transplanting. All right, but we'll listen to the applicant.
All right, and on the left, do we have any questions? No questions? I do have some questions, really quickly, regarding the oak tree. I, I do have some questions really quickly regarding the oak tree. Mr. Chua, um, the, the notice sign on the street says removal of three oaks.
The, that was the original, um, that was the original request.
Uh-huh.
Now, uh, when, when staff is working with the, uh, the applicant, we were able to situate it so that the, uh, there will be less encroachment, so that there will be less trees affected on the project. It used to encumber the whole, the whole hillside of the project for a parking area, which is at the top of the hillside. So now the project has been, um, scaled down as, as small as it can be so that at the same, so that we can save enough, I mean, the other oak trees and at the same time build a building that's suitable for the applicant's need.
Okay. And the other question I have is now that it's going to be, the proposal is to basically change the general plan, make an amendment to it, are we getting those units in our Measure E bank?
Yes, we are. We're gaining two units.
I think you touched upon that briefly. Okay. And regarding the fact that it is a protected ridge line, you are very confident that there are no issues with any encroachment?
Yes, there are no issues because the protected ridge line applies to properties that are 300 feet horizontally away from the designated ridge line and 100 feet below. If, if, I mean, within 100 feet vertically. So this project falls beyond those two parameters. So staff is confident that M1 zone zoning is appropriate without the PR.
Maybe I can augment those comments. The subject property, the three lots, is part of a much larger parcel that goes up, up the hill further and onto the top of the ridge line. It's the tail end of the ridge line and it was actually a city-initiated zone change. There were several citywide where we took them parcel by parcel. So, uh, these three lots are down at the bottom. They're being severed off from the remainder and the rest of it, uh, where the ridge line actually is retains the protected ridge line overlay and, and the residential designation in the general plan.
Thank you. And I think Mr. Price has a question. Did you say you have a question?
Well, I did. Perhaps I'm getting ahead of myself here, but I'll ask it anyway. Um, have, there was mention about the cut and the hauling and I'm just thinking about the haul route there. Has that been contemplated at all? Because I know you, you've got two different directions to go there and neither of them are real easy.
The, uh, the haul route will be, um, will be subject to approval by, uh, the Public Works Department. Normally that's work, that's to be worked out late in the project and in the grading, uh, plan check phase.
That, that's fine. I just, uh, I envisioned them coming right alongside of the lakes property there and that, that's not going to work.
Could you just repeat the question that you had briefly? Or are you okay?
I, I was asking about the haul route because of the, the cut there.
The cut. Okay, we do have two speakers, well, one speaker and one is available for questions. Uh, the representative for the applicant is architect Neil Scribner from Newberry Park. And then we have, um, available Sherish Shaw for questions only. Uh, he said it's his project. All right. Good evening, Mrs. Scribner.
Good evening. I'm Neil Scribner, architect for the project, and welcome to Dos Fiantos. I happen to live nearby. The owner, Mr. and Mrs. Shaw, uh, he's here this evening should you have some questions regarding his operation or if, if you're inquisitive about that. Will did a pretty good job there, but you may have some additional questions. Um, he's, he owns the property already. He, he's going to own the building and it's his, his business. He's been in this business for 30 years. He does do the electronic testing. It's a very quiet, um, testing procedure and it's non-toxic, so there's no real impact of any kind to the neighborhood. All the conditions are acceptable. The planning condition did change one of the conditions. They approved the project, uh, the materials that we presented. So I want to make sure that condition was changed and is carried through so we get the materials that, that the planning commission approved. Regarding the testing site, um, there'll be no overnight materials, vehicles, uh, of any kind left on that site in the evening. So it'll, it'll be just, the rare times when they, when they don't have room inside for testing, they take it to that site and do additional testing during the daytime. Will covered some of the details. The building is just under, uh, 8,000 square feet and it, uh, covers a little less than 13% of the site. It's set back 100 feet from the center line of the building. And, um, even though you can't see it from the freeway, we, we have followed some of the view corridor guidelines. We set the building into the hill to re, reduce the impact, get it lower and closer to the street level, closer to the parking lot level. Um, the predominant material is a split-faced gray block. It's kind of a medium gray tone. About 15% of the front of the building facing the street is the block. The balance is dark gray solar glass and the, the metal will be satin aluminum and we're going to have sun shades over the windows with the same satin aluminum. Uh, there's a lot of very nice landscaping around the entrance to the building and, uh, as I say, Mr. Shaw will own the building and he's, he wants to be proud of it. So I ask that you approve the project as the planning commission did and should you have any questions, I would be pleased to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Scribner. Mr. Adam, did you have a question for him?
My, my only comment, it's a, it's a fine project, um, and I just appreciate your client's, um, willingness to transplant oak tree number four, which according to the oak tree report is a healthy and vigorous tree. Thank you.
Yes, I, he's willing to do that and I, it, it is going to be kind of in the back, but, but you're right.
That's fine.
It's a healthy tree and we could replace them in the front, but that's okay. He's willing to do that.
Appreciate your willingness to do that.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil.
All right. Are there any additional questions? If none, then I will close the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Scribner.
Thank you.
And, uh, public hearing is closed. Uh, there won't be a rebuttal. Council discussion regarding the oak tree and having it transplanted. Mr. Adam?
I don't know if it actually has to be conditioned because it seems to be already in the, it's not, yeah, but it says right here in the transplanting of one toyaon and one oak. I'm willing to let the toyaon go. But the oak, uh, I, I would really, um, ask my fellow council members to allow that tree a chance to be transplanted.
Okay. Is that a motion, Mr. Adam?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, and, and with everything else, you know, the MND-
Yeah, that would be quite a list of things here.
Yeah, one through seven on the staff recommendations and transplant the tree. And, and I guess I say, let me just add, if the tree doesn't make it, then we got to go back and-
Remove it.
You know, the two 24 inches and the 136-inch box.
Okay.
Mr. Scribner's nodding his head.
Good.
All right. Any questions to the motion? None? Thank you. Okay. Then, uh, Madam Clark?
Councilmember Irwin? Councilmember Price? Councilmember Adam? Mayor Protem Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Bill de La Pena?
Yes.
The motion carries five zero and the ordinance title is an ordinance amending the municipal code relating to official zoning maps, G7, and changes in zoning classification of property located on south side of Conejo Ridge Road, approximately 600 feet from Willow Lane. Zone change 2008-70630. The applicant is compatible electronics.
Thank you. And I see we have three items up next, nine A, B, and C, all dealing with Newberry Park issues. And, um, I would prefer to deal with them now before we take a break because we do have some audience members and if they have to wait even longer, I think, um, the rest does not deal with Newberry Park directly. So if we could please call for department report nine A, our fire chief Ted Smith, as well as associate planner Shirley Austin to talk about an update on the spring fire.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council and City Manager, Mr. Mitnick. I'm here to, uh, give you an update on the Springs Fire and the event that happened on May 2nd. An interesting note here that is on our display is the, um, regional incident fire history map that, uh, would indicate that, uh, we live in a wildland interface area and the homes in the, uh, Dos Fiantos area were impacted. And this is the, just a very interesting map of the, um, previous fires through the years that have impacted the front country of Thousand Oaks and progressed into the Malibu foothills to the coast. On May 2nd, uh, the fire started on Highway 101 about approximately 06:30 hours in the morning and it progressed, uh, very aggressively and rapidly with, uh, winds sustained at 40 miles an hour, gusting up to 50 and then wind, wind peak speeds on some peaks for about, uh, 70 miles an hour. By the afternoon of May 2nd, the fire had started encroaching, uh, the community of Dos Fiantos. Uh, the impacted the Cal State Channel Islands University and the infrastructure of the city of Thousand Oaks was threatened. I'd like to note that there was 250, uh, 2,500 homes in the Dos Fiantos area that the fire progressed through and we did not lose one single structure in this event. So, uh, kudos to our, our firefighters and, uh, and the effort that, uh, was put forth on that day. At 10:00 PM, uh, where I ran into Chief Fox down at the, uh, Malibu, uh, Coast Highway, this is what we were presented with coming into, uh, Regional Park down there at the Sycamore State Canyon Beach. And again, Chief Fox, thank you for your agency for helping out and doing a valid effort for us in this event. Noted on the right, uh, that thing is, uh, part of the 40 mile an hour winds, which were gusts on the wind ridge top, but much higher. But this fire, the challenges with this fire was that they were spotting miles and out in front of itself, half mile to a mile out in front of itself. So that's what it looked from an aerial view and then with the interface of these structures and homes around it, it was just a very challenging event for us. Uh, there's a multi-agency coordination. This is just a picture of what the command posts look like, uh, the, the fire assets that we brought from, uh, out of state, uh, neighboring city of Los Angeles and county, Santa Barbara, uh, law enforcement who, uh, kudos to Chief Pentis and his group and his, uh, evacuation team that was available to us in Dos Fiantos area that helped organize the evacuation and the air assets that were brought in from all variant agencies, including the Ventura County Sheriff Air Unit and the Ventura County Fire Department. The defensible space that we, uh, acquired for the Ventura County Fire Department came, played a key role. Uh, as you can see, the top left picture, that's where it happens when a fire burns through and with the defensible space that, that house was not incurred by any direct flame impingement and it's been a proven statewide, uh, program that is just completely, uh, un, un, daunted with its value to the homeowners and citizens of Ventura County and throughout the state. And as you can see, the fire front approaching that home in the Dos Fiantos area, those flames are standing 30 feet tall and, uh, being pushed by a 40 mile an hour wind. So that was just another good example of a good partnership with the city of Thousand Oaks, the open space and, uh, the ordinance that the Ventura County Fire Department will present. So I'd like to hand this over to my partner.
Thank you, Chief Smith, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'd like to report on the trails. Um, all the trails in Dos Fiantos and Rancho Petra Open Space areas are open except the Olympia Farms Trail. There was some minor damage to trails that occurred during the firefighting efforts, but that damage was repaired by the Conejo Open Space Conservation Agency Rangers and the California Department of Forestry and, um, Fire Protection. It's really important at this point for trail users to stay on designated trails during the recovery period so that the plants can take hold and, um, stabilize the slopes and prevent erosion. And that's, of course, important at all times on the trails, so that's just a friendly reminder. And, um, notifications were sent out actually by the National Park Service and State Parks to all Newberry Park residents, um, stating what's, you know, how they can help, um, protect the land and what they should do in the future in emergencies. This is the Dos Fiantos and Rancho Petra Trail map and, um, although much of the Dos Fiantos open space was burned, all of the trails in the Dos Fiantos open space are open as I mentioned. This is the Rancho Petra Open Space, which is just south of Dos Fiantos and, um, the Olympia Farms Trail, which is highlighted in red, is the only one that's still closed and that's closed to protect sensitive resources. And here is a shot from the southern portion of the Rancho Petra Open Space looking northwest towards Dos Fiantos and this is the portion of Rancho Petra Open Space that was burned. And I'll now turn it over to Mr. Spurgeon. Thank you.
On the afternoon of the first day of the fire, the fire came, did come down the open space and jumped across Borched Road. In, um, in doing so, it burned the city's, a portion of the city's guard rail and median improvements along that stretch of Borched Road that enters, uh, Dos Fiantos. That median was originally constructed in about 2008. Uh, about a half mile was constructed, including the guard rail, landscaping, irrigation improvements at about a $1.8 million price tag. The upper 60% of that, or about 1,500 feet, were burned from the fire. Uh, after the, immediately following the fire, uh, the damaged area was cordoned off and we provided some warning signage as well as reduced the, uh, the speed limit so that, uh, to increase the safety of, of people traveling there since the guard rail was damaged. Back in June, council approved a contract on an emergency basis to get a contractor out to repair that, uh, again reinstating the safety and aesthetic, uh, features of, of the median. The cost for the repairs, about $600,000. Construction started last week and is progressing. We expect it to be done and, um, pretty much wrapped up in about a month, about mid-October. There'll be some landscape establishment maintenance after that, uh, but, uh, just, uh, a few more weeks and, and that'll be, that'll be completed. Um, one thing I do want to, before I move on here, one thing I want to make very clear because we've had a lot of questions from Dos Fiantos residents about the assessments and this was, uh, something that came out in, in a couple of news articles. The cost for the fire, uh, we have submitted reimbursement requests to the state, county, and to our insurance carrier. We have not received back definitive answers on any of those, from any of those yet. I would say that, um, as a last resort, we might want to consider assessments through the assessment district to cover all or a portion of that, uh, those costs depending on what we get with reimbursements. Should that be, uh, an option that we want to pursue, we would have to wait until the next round of assessment district proceedings where we set the rates. That would be next, um, May to June where there'd be a public hearing. Uh, so at that time we would notify the, the residents that in fact we were planning to do that so that they had an opportunity to come down during a public hearing and discuss that, uh, before a final decision was made. So I want to be, uh, clear about that. I think the, the news article is, uh, maybe not entirely factual. We have not in fact made that decision, uh, to assess, uh, property owners for those, those costs. Uh, one of the things that after any fire is a concern is, uh, when the rainy season comes along, mud and debris flows. So in the Dos Fiantos area from this, this map, you can see a whole number of, uh, various green dots and, and whatnot and, and there's just numerous inlets and V ditches that surround and abut the burned areas. Staff have been working with county and federal Natural Resources Conservation Service personnel to develop mitigation measures for key inlets and some of the V ditches. We've also reached out to the HOA for the Dos Fiantos master area so that we can assist them with, um, with mitigation measures. Uh, we will be installing in perhaps some of these kind of areas where you have inlets, um, sandbags or other debris catchments to mitigate the debris and mud flows. Uh, with that, uh, we are done with our update report and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mrs. Spurgeon, Councilmember Irwin has a question.
I, I didn't catch this. Um, when I look at the pictures of the median, the rails are completely burned, but the fences, the white fences on either side didn't burn at all. So what is it that the, the median's being rebuilt with? Are you planning on using the same type of wood?
We are replacing in kind the improvements that were there.
Is it much, but is it, it looks like it was much more flammable than the, the white post- Is it, but is it, it looks like it was much more flammable than the white posts on the street?
Clearly, clearly. The white rail fences, that's concrete rail-type material. So, yeah, it didn't burn, obviously.
Concrete, well, the concrete that looks like wood, yeah.
It does. Obviously, the guardrail is a different material, it's a different function, it's not decorative, it's actually a safety feature. And that material was selected by council back in 2007 when that was designed. And that was a result of outreach with the HOAs here. It was a, it was kind of a, you know, balance between the safety features of a guardrail and the aesthetics. Because we could have put up just metal beam-type guardrail.
Or we did that.
That wouldn't have burned, but clearly not as aesthetic, aesthetically pleasing.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, just thank you, Madam Mayor. I didn't have a chance to thank Chief Smith the last time he made a report on this. I can tell you, when he talks about the extreme fire behavior, I was just commenting to Councilmember Irwin, if you, those of you that, you live here, obviously, so you recognize, you're driving up Borchard Road and you saw the damage that was there. If you are aware of the large wooden walls, I'm not quite sure, they're built by the Navy that are literally on the sand off of Point Magoo, they were on fire too. So if you just stop and think about the distance between Borchard Road and basically the coast and the amount of fire line that all the agencies had to deal with, it was a remarkable fire behavior. I know we've had some professional discussions about the speed and the, just the amount of spotting that was going on. And I just got to congratulate Chief Smith and Chief Miller, who was the IC, for really great work. I was able to go out to the command post early on and the incident management they brought very early in the incident, I think, had a dramatic impact on our ability to, as Chief Smith pointed out, not lose a single structure in very erratic fire behavior. And also want to note the good partnership that we had with the Ventura County Sheriff's Department, both the Fire Chief and the Sheriff for there at the command post overseeing their staffs. And we were very fortunate to have very good public safety partnerships between law enforcement and fire. So I would just say that the Fire Department did a great job here. Very difficult fire. We could have easily lost a number of structures. And I know the chief joins me in telling you, we're not even close to out of the woods yet, so to speak. We are just coming into what we can normally consider our real erratic fire behavior with San Ana winds and such, so, great job.
Any other comments before I call the public speakers? None? Thank you. First speaker is Louis Goldsman, followed by Nick Kidway and Dale Schleisch.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers and staff. I'm Louis Goldsman, Dos Fiantos. And I am currently a member of the Board of Directors of one of the two master homeowner associations. And in 2005, when we went through the reconstruction or the construction of the decision to, on the construction, anyway, of the median on Borchard, I was also a member of the board at that time and participated extensively with Public Works. I'd also like to thank you, while I have the chance, for your public service. And I thank you for accepting the role of virtual punching bags for those citizens that sometimes feel the need to punch somebody. I personally don't ever feel that need. The question, the reason I wanted to talk about was because the question that Mr. Spurgeon addressed, we have been getting on the board. Why should we have to pay for it? Which was, came out of the July 2nd article in the Acorn. We're not going to get into that. We understand that nothing has been decided and we appreciate the fact that it's stated to be a case of last resort. However, one thing I did want to clarify about a comment that was made in the Acorn article, and my belief is if it's in the newspaper or on the internet, it must be true and accurate. So, but that comment nevertheless is what, you know, affected a lot of our neighbors and caused them to question us on the board about who selected the timber. By the way, it's steel-backed timber and we had extensive discussions about the safety factor and the reason why it was considered. Basically, the first consideration was in April of 2005, when Public Works had a community meeting and presented various design concepts, one of which was timber back, what you see. And others, you know, concrete that would have landscape built within it. How, there's only two speakers, three speakers? Okay. And, and it went forward from there. Ultimately, in May of that year, Public Works came up with a draft report they gave us, and they recommended the steel back. I also explained the safety reasons why. In response to Councilwoman Irwin's comment, it could have been what they called, you know, Armco, the steel you see on the side of freeway sometime, the curved steel. That steel is held in the ground with very deep wooden posts because you need something like that that can absorb impact. So it's primarily a safety feature. And even if we did have the steel, we still have wooden posts. So we still would have had the same problem. But in any event, we appreciate the fact that this is going to be considered. We would like to hope that in the very end, though, there's another alternative then to a special assessment or an increase in the assessment to the Landscape and Lighting District. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Goldsman. And next speaker is Nick Kidway, followed by Dale Schleisch.
Nick Kidway, resident of Newberry Park, Director of Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks. I would like to start out by thanking the Fire Department and the Sheriff Department for their outstanding work on this gray fire. I don't know if it was good or bad, but I took a lot of pictures and videos. In fact, the Acorn editor ran past me into a yard to take additional pictures, which I did not do. But that resulted, plus the TV coverage, in a lot of phone calls and Facebook alerts to me because they were all concerned because it looked like my home was on fire or I was right next to a home, which was not true. One of the interesting aspects was the helicopter feed from the pond that is next to Cypress. I was involved in those negotiations at that time with the city and to see, and I took the videos and they are on my Concerned Citizen page where they picked the water and made the drops. The other interesting thing was on Portero Road where the fire was coming down. And it turned out to be a great chance to meet the neighbors. And a lot of people recognized me from the council and I had a wonderful conversation. And there were some professional photographers that are retired and that took great pictures. I wish I had access to those pictures. Then I come to the real important part, meat and potatoes, which is the Borchard grade. That was a political football in the 90s, late 90s. The thing that disappoints me is that this is a financial issue. It's good to hear that Public Works is really not seriously thinking about it, but it should really have not been on the radar even to ask residents for an additional money. And the disappointing thing is, I asked two council members to give me a report on the capital improvement budget for Dos Fiantos, and neither one obliged. So I spent some time yesterday, and there's no overhead. In fact, it's so difficult to print these reports, I mean, it's not resident-friendly. So all I could do was get half pages and I can hardly read it. I have provided a copy to you folks, and the history goes all the way from 2005, and it gives the detail as to how the money was spent. And the bottom line is, there's one, almost $2 million in the Dos Fiantos Development Fund, but it's under a bogus fictitious, whatever you want to call it, holding fund for Borchard Road improvements. This is something to do with the Sound管. I don't think there's any work that is going to be done. That money is sitting there. That should be used, A, for the problem with the median, and B, it should, there's a nexus. They should be used for the Dos Fiantos residents in this neighborhood and should not be available for other things. And in the past, that's why I provided you, I will conclude, with the past years where the money was spent, like for the Borchard, for the MGM Ranch, a million dollars was spent for the CLU pool. So it's great to do things for the community, but when there's a nexus and you're taking money from the homeowners, it should really be used for those homeowners. And I need an answer, and some, and people need an answer about this holding fund and this money that's available in the Dos Fiantos Fund. Is it going to be used or it's just going to be swept under the rug?
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. I'm sure we'll answer that. Mr. Dale, please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dale Schleich. I'm a 10-year resident of Dos Fiantos Ranch here in Newberry Park. Also, I would like to publicly thank the Fire Department and the other agencies that helped save Dos Fiantos from the Springs Fire. I'm here tonight to speak to you regarding an article in the Acorn newspaper suggesting that the city council was considering assessing Dos Fiantos residents a special assessment to help pay for the repairs to the Borchard Road median, which was damaged during the Spring Fire. My family and I, 10 years ago, chose to live here in Newberry Park because of the commitment of the city council to the aesthetics of the community. We've lived in Dos Fiantos before the median was built. Although we had some input to the ultimate design of the installed median, we were pleased at the end with the design that the city of Thousand Oaks installed using the community's tax dollars. Now with the unfortunate occurrence of the Springs Fire, the median needs to be repaired. The article in the Acorn suggested that Dos Fiantos residents may be assessed a special assessment to help with the repair of the median because the road in the median is for the benefit of Dos Fiantos residents only. I'm here tonight to tell you in person, I'm opposed to that notion and that idea. Because of the use of the parks by many organizations, including AYSO Soccer, Club Soccer, Baseball, Lacrosse, the Mud Run, and other park and recreation district activities, the school, the shops, the restaurant, and the YMCA here in Dos Fiantos, is not restricted, Borchard Road use and the median's safety is not restricted to Dos Fiantos residents only. People from all over the Caneo Valley come to Dos Fiantos. The community, the city council of Thousand Oaks does not have the taxing authority over all who come to Dos Fiantos. And I urge you not to abuse your taxing authority by singling out Dos Fiantos residents for a special assessment to repair the median. I do appreciate staff comments that it is a last resort. The median was installed and paid for by Thousand Oaks tax dollars, and I believe it should be repaired by insurance proceeds and Thousand Oaks tax dollars, not a special assessment on Dos Fiantos residents. Thank you very much for the time to speak.
Thank you very much. All right. Now, this is a, the recommendation is to receive and file. I don't think we need to take a formal vote on this. Thank you. All right. But we will take note of the comments made regarding the median. Item number 9B, relocation of the Newberry Park Fire District Station Number 35. And again, we have Fire Chief Ted Smith.
Madam Mayor and Council? Thank you for this opportunity. I come with good news. On October 9th in 2007, a consulting firm, Ralph Anderson Associates, prepared a comprehensive overall operational financial review of the fire service provided for the city of Thousand Oaks. The report contained a series of findings, service delivery options, enhancements, and recommendations. Recommendation number five was a relocation of Fire Station 35 located at 2,500 West Hillcrest Drive in Thousand Oaks, in the corporate center, if you will, over by AMGEN. Fire Station 35 was opened approximately 51 years ago. It's built in Jan, July 27, 1962. It covers a primary response of approximately 11 square miles. It's housed and staffed by a single-house engine company with fire captain, fire engineer, and a firefighter. And it stages, they're a one-house first-run fire apparatus engine, Type 1 engine, and with a reserve engine that's donated by the state of California. It's an OES fire engine. Fire Station 35 is currently the smallest piece of fire station property we own in the fire district. It's owned, it's comprised of three separate parcels that kind of totaling a square foot of 10,000 square feet. Fire station itself is compressed down into only 3,400 square feet. So it's one of, it is one of our smallest fire stations in the district. Today, Fire Station 35 no longer meets the fire services in the fire district's operational service delivery model in terms of modern building design, seismic code, and requirements. Some of the examples of that are, fire engine at Fire Station 35 must be backed in. Our current model and our newest fire stations we drive through, it's much safer operation. It's proven to be problematic, inherently risky for us to back the fire engine in a Fire Station 35 located on Hillcrest. And our newer stations are designed with a pull-through, as I told. Periodically during the business hours of the business park in the AMGEN area, it is nearly impossible to back that fire engine in off that busy road during 5 o'clock rush hour from 4 to 5. As you can see, it's a problematic issue for us. The building is prohibitively small and approximately half the size of many of our fires' newest fire stations. The fire district always strives for the highest level of service for all the citizens of Ventura County, including the citizens of Thousand Oaks. So it is, it regularly upgrades our new apparatus. And so these new apparatus we buy on an annual basis for fire stations throughout the county, including the city of Thousand Oaks, are much larger and wider than they were when that fire station was designed back in 1962. The building also is cramped quarters. It presents challenges for the quarters and the underused adequate space, facilities, privacy, and other issues, the infrastructure, that are almost a half a century old. It's increasingly difficult to maintain and the infrastructure is actually degrading. For the past four years, the fire district has, and staff has been working, with the city of Thousand Oaks staff, is working cooperatively and local, with local businesses in the community to craft an appropriate relocation and strategy for the fire station. I'm happy to report that the challenges have been met and a number of the factors were taken into consideration, including zoning, compatibility, access, space requirements, and response times, and acceptable growth of the neighborhood and the impact of the neighborhood. As a result of this collaboration with the city, the planned development, the relocation of Fire Station 35's current location, it was acquired some property shortly, only a block away, at 751 Mitchell Road. And in the staff report, I have some attachments for you to review. It's located in the Rancho Caneo Industrial Park. The fire district intends to file for the appropriate zone changes applications, permit applications, to be approved by the city in the site plan and design for the purpose of the new fire station. With the site's close proximity and existing station location, the district anticipates no negative impacts to the service levels to the citizens of Thousand Oaks. The new station is expected to provide an enhanced fire service due to its improved location, innovation, and technology. The new station is anticipated to be approximately 10,000 square feet, so it's about the size of the lot that the three comprised that are on now. So it's going to be a very nice, large fire station. Plans to be, the plans are to be submitted and completed by June of 2014. Construction potentially could be started in the summer of 2014 with anticipation that we could operationally be in the fire station in the fall of 2015. So with that, that concludes my report, and I'm available for questions if you have any.
Thank you, Chief Smith. Any questions? No? Then council, council member, Mr. Mitnick, City Manager.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I feel I would be remiss if I didn't say something on this since it's been many, many, many years in the making. And we appreciate the leadership from Ted Smith and the others in the Fire Department. And this is a great example of how well the county of Ventura and the city of Thousand Oaks routinely work together and what we can achieve when we put our heads together. Because there was a lot of negotiation and discussions with Skyworks to get to this point. And there were several instances along the way when it appeared that the efforts had failed. But the former Fire Chief of the county, Bob Roper, played a key role in going back to Skyworks. And we went together as the Fire Chief and the City Manager, and we got this deal and we're very proud. Tonight's a monumental night, not just for the community, but also for the men and women who work in Fire Station 35. So we appreciate that. Thank you for allowing me to make those comments.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Adams has a comment.
How much bigger will the new station be than the one that you currently have?
How much bigger will the new station be than the one that you currently have?
Almost triple.
Triple?
Yeah.
Yeah. So go to thirty thousand square feet from ten, right?
No, it goes from thirty-four hundred to ten.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Thirty-four.
Yeah. So I like, I like your first, the numbers, though. I like that.
I'm just trying to picture backing in a fire truck into a little thirty-four hundred square foot.
What's, what's really challenging is the, the, the new fire trucks are eight feet wide, and our old doors for the old fire trucks that were built back in that era were, were nowhere near that wide, and our doors are about ten-eight, so we only have about two inches of fudge on, on each side, and then you have to, and they're good. We don't.
Wow. Two inches on either side?
On either side.
Phew.
Yeah, so it's, it's antiquated, it's.
I think we should have a competition amongst the council members to see who can back the truck in. I think Council Member Fox may have the advantage with his depth of experience, but I'd like to try backing that baby in.
We do have, oh, go ahead.
We can work on that.
Oh, who's that? Oh. But before we do, before we do that, we do need to hear from Mr. Kidway. He's our speaker on this issue.
Nick Kidway, resident of Newberry Park, Director of Concerns, citizen of Thousand Oaks. Honorable Mayor, Council Member Mitnick, thank you for letting me speak on this subject. It's unbelievable. It's twenty years since I was with Mr. Fox on a committee on a county level, and Mr. Roper was our assistant to the committee regarding the fire issues in the county and the city. And so that kind of brought some memories back, and I have seen them back the trucks over the years, and they do an outstanding job, and most people are not in, even if we are in a hurry, we have no problem with being stalled and waiting because we all appreciate what Mr. Smith and his crew does. This is, and we want to congratulate him for, and the community for this great achievement of having this new, long-awaited fire station. But the reason I'm here and speaking, you know, it's always easy to speak on the positive things, but there are other quirky issues, and you know, you put out fires, but there's a fire burning in this community, which is, which was reported in ninety-four by a committee, by a consultant that we paid for, that there is going to be cannibalism of existing businesses in Newberry Park. You are in Newberry Park today, so that's one of the reasons it's really appropriate to talk about this, that, you know, there's been a lot of give and take and changes regarding this fire station. It was supposed to be, and I'm not, no expert on it, I can't remember the details, but it was part of the Seventh Day Adventist and was supposed to be on the road where the new post office is. And then I don't know what happened, I don't remember, it's not important. But the thing is that, in the process, this council has given approval for an additional forty thousand square feet of retail and office in, on Old Cano Road, not on, on Grand Vista, I apologize. And if you have a chance, it's late, but if you go on in the shopping center where Albertson's is, go to the shopping center on Kimbert. In fact, look at the brand-new shopping center where Dollar Tree is. On the left, it's dangerous. The building has not been completed because all these places are empty. And you have an obligation, not only to protect the structures from the fires, but to protect the existing businesses. And the businesses in this community, mayor, talk to them. They are crying out that you should not build these additional things and destroy the existing businesses, and they cannot make any profits. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Item nine B is receive report, no vote necessary, so we thank Chief Smith and the Ventura County Fire District, and congratulations on this exciting development. All right. Nine C, Wendy Drive One-O-One Freeway Interchange Improvement Project will be presented by Deputy Public Works Director Cliff Finley. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. With me this evening, I have Tom Pisa. He is our Construction Division Engineering Manager, sitting next to me. Tom is here because he is responsible for the construction of this project and is here in case there's any questions. Briefly, a summary of the project. As you recall, you've seen this before, the Wendy One-O-One Bridge, we're adding additional travel lane in each direction. We're adding additional lanes on, to the on and off ramps, adding a bike lane in each direction over the bridge, adding a sidewalk on the west side of the bridge with a signalized pedestrian crossing, and we're providing decorative lighting, fencing, and a facade on, on the bridge structure. In summary, the council approved the construction contract award in December sixth, two thousand and eleven. As you recall, the contract was CA Rasmussen, and the contract amount was eight-point-five million dollars. In April two thousand and twelve, clearing and grubbing began, and the underground work began. May two thousand and twelve, they started working on the fittings, the footings and the underground. Continued work in June, they started saw cutting on the bridge, doing paving on the center meeting, and setting pile shoring. Work continued in July, paving the temporary off ramp, realigning traffic, and starting the underground work and rebar on the footings. In August two thousand and twelve, they started the sign removal, the asphalt grinding on the northbound on-ramp, and prep the bridge supports for the new girders. September two thousand and twelve, work continued on the, the abutment footings and the retaining walls. In October, they were preparing for the installation of the new girders and taking care of some of the underground work, the pipeline repair, et cetera. And in November twelve, two thousand and twelve, you, you might recall, that's when the new girders were installed. That work was done at night. As you recall, there were five girders installed. Their span was approximately three hundred feet, all the way across the freeway. Each of those girders was up to a hundred-foot long and weighed close to seventeen tons. Those went in, and work continued. In January two thousand and thirteen, there's a few months there we missed, but we'll keep going, they started work on the on-ramps, continued work on the on-ramps. February, they, actually, the big thing in February was the jack-and-roll operation where we actually set the girders in place, and they actually jack each one of those girders up and roll them along the support to set them in place. In March two thousand and thirteen, they were working on the deck, deck bridging. The deck pores were underway. First, they started on the east side of the bridge deck expansion. They put in a temporary sidewalk, continued on deck construction, and the big issue as we moved into the spring of two thousand and thirteen was getting the pedestrians across the bridge during construction. May two thousand and thirteen, they started work on the west side of the bridge. And June two thousand and thirteen, started on the demolition of the west side and, and started installation of the new deck, decking. In July, they continued with the, the pedestrian work on the west side and started work on the intersection where, on the north side of the on-ramp. In August two thousand and thirteen, the bridge deck on the west side was, was completed. Where we are now is nearing the finish of the project. It's been, it's been about eighteen months since the project began. That was the original estimated completion time. We now expect to be done by December. Right now, they're doing the backfill, and all the trench areas, they're finishing those out. They're, the turnpocket off Old Cano Road is closed currently, so they can, they can connect that to the new expansion of the bridge deck. They're working on the travel, traffic signal modifications and the intersection improvements on the north side of the bridge, and they're working on that additional lane to the northbound off-ramp. The total project cost is fifteen-point-eight million dollars. In summary, the federal highway grants is about ten-point-eight million, local gas taxes, two-point-one million, and developer fees at about two-point-nine million. So you notice there's no general fund dollars associated with the project. To date, we've approved, you've approved change orders of two-point-two million dollars, but the big one was one-point-four million to be reimbursed from the Seventh Day Adventist Church. That was approved by city council on May twenty-eighth, and that was to add the additional lane to the northbound off-ramp. So the remaining project schedule, we anticipate the traffic signal installation modifications will be done in October. The pavement will be completed at the end of October, the bridge deck completed by the end of October, landscaping done in December, and the project will be substantially complete by the middle of December of this year. As far as our public outreach, we have had over eighty-four hundred webpage visits during the project period to date, and we have sent out weekly closure updates to over four hundred interested residents and businesses. And with that, we're here for, if you have any questions.
That's great community outreach. Thank you very much. When will, will it be open or completed completely?
It, it will be complete and operational in phases, but absolutely done, we're hoping by Thanksgiving, but definitely by the holidays.
Great. Are there any questions? No?
Does that include that one-point-four million-dollar change order?
Yes.
That'll be done, right?
And, and that is part of the reason for the delay and the extra three to four months here that we're.
Okay. It's worth it, though.
Well, despite the community outreach, we still do have a speaker here on this issue tonight. John, I believe it's Reedy. Good evening, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Thanks for coming to Newberry Park. Welcome. I think this is a great project. I think it's going really well, and thanks for the leadership of the council and staff on, on doing this project. I have the dubious distinction of having been here long enough to have seen all the other overpasses and intersections in town improved, but I think this is going to be the best one. The inclusion of bike lanes will put it over the top for me. I think that's great. I do have a comment about communication. Mr. Finley's wrong. The project's going to be complete in August of two thousand and thirteen. I know that because that's what the, one of the eight thousand hits on the webpage shows. There's a summary sheet that shows it will be complete in August of two thousand and thirteen. There are very detailed Gantt charts showing the detail of all the effort required to get it to August of two thousand and thirteen. So my point is, there's a communication issue. I would hope that the website could be updated to include at least the projected completion date, to be correct. If it had some level of detail as to the, what's going to go on between now and then, that'd be great as well. And then finally, the four, I'm one of the four hundred people who get the report on a weekly basis. It's of dubious value. The report comes out regularly. I guess it's a, a report that can be drawn from the Caltrans site. The information is not really one hundred percent. As an example, it's, it's, it's a closure report. It shows when lanes are going to be closed in the main line of the off-ramp and so forth and so on. The southbound Wendy to northbound One-O-One on-ramp has been closed for months, and it doesn't even show on the report as a closure. Other closures that show on there may or may not close. So I would just suggest that the input to that report be, spend a little extra time making that good, and all will be good. Thanks a lot for your help.
Thank you. Do, so does it mean we're four months behind schedule?
Well, actually, we, we added that additional lane to the off-ramp, which is one-point-four million dollars worth of work. So actually, the contractor has done a great job at trying to stay on schedule. It has taken a little longer, but it was definitely extra work.
Just a, just an observation, and I think I'm speaking for all of us, is that we recognize that, that we have done staffing cuts and everything else. I think the speaker brings up a very legitimate point, though, is that if we're going to put information on a website, it needs to be accurate. That really goes to, you know, really the professionalism of our community. This is a great project. It's something to be very proud of, but it's just not okay for us to have incorrect information on a website for any extended period of time, really under any circumstances. So, Mr. Mitnick, I'm, we're asking you to take a look at that, not just for this, but anytime we're putting it. From my sense is, if we are putting incorrect information out or leaving it up for an extended period of time in one case, not to pick on one department, we're probably doing it in other areas, too. We need to take a look at that.
Mr. Price?
Yeah. Mr. Finley, is the information about that additional work on the website, about that additional northbound exit lane?
The, some of the information is there. It is, the, the problem we, that we've, we need to update the general information that was put about the project from the start. There's additional PDF information added, council actions, but people are going to the general, and that's, and it needs to be corrected.
I get it.
Council Member Fox is absolutely correct.
Yeah, I think we're about to embark on another one of these endeavors, and the Twenty-three One-O-One interchange, and it'd be nice if we can use this time to, to maybe fine, finely tune those skills.
Point taken.
Absolutely. And are we also on budget?
At this point, we are within budget, yes.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just an observation, just to kind of, why these community meetings are important is I don't know necessarily that that gentleman was coming down to City Hall and making those comments, but he did come to his backyard, so to speak, to make the comments about that and uncovered an issue that I think is important to the city staff as well as the council. So these meetings, there is some value in coming out because there's, you will hear certain things from residents that you would not necessarily hear if they had to come to City Hall.
All right. This is also to receive and file, so that's done. Item nine D is initiation of amendments to Rancho Cano Industrial Park's specific plan. Mr. Jeff Spector, Senior Planner.
This one's real quick. This is a proposal to address the permitted uses in the, in specific Plan Fifteen. That's Rancho Cano Industrial Park specific plan. And then this is brought forward in response to a direction that was given on July ninth when the council denied a request to operate a swap meet on Corporate Center Drive. And the council expressed interest in reconsidering the swap meets and perhaps other permitted uses in this specific plan. And I want the council to be assured that staff will be contacting the property owners that it would be affected and soliciting their input as part of this process as we move forward. And that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Spector. Are there any questions regarding this? Mr. Adam?
Well, what comes to mind is that old expression, is this trip necessary? I mean, we're talking about staff time here, we're talking about a planning commission hearing, public hearing, we're talking about a city council public hearing. I mean, these swap meets are already subject to approval, a special use permit. The city council has the final say. I mean, isn't, isn't that good enough? I mean, do we really need to go through this process and take up, you know, a vast amount of time and two commit, two bodies to look at it? I'm, I'm just not convinced of that. It just seems to me to be overkill. I mean, the, the uses in SP Fifteen are laid out, and the council has the ultimate say. We saw that in the last hearing, and it went the way it went, and so why do, why do we need to do this?
If I could just interject for a moment, obviously, it's at the council discretion whether to direct staff to, you know, provide revisions to the swap meet ordinance. When we did discuss the community marketplace, there were questions regarding the datedness of the swap meet ordinance itself. If council concludes that you're fine with what it looks like right now, then, you know, then the direction would be not to initiate a municipal code amendment. It really is at your discretion.
I don't know. It's just, we do, we do so many things, the government's involved, I mean, the thing's written, it just seems to me a slippery slope. It's all there, we went through the hearing, I mean, and what's the chance of having another swap meet coming up before us? And if it does, we'll be the ones that, we'll be the ones that make the decision. I mean, you know, it's, it's up to the council. We have the final say, and then, hey, you know.
Well, you may have a point, Mr. Adam.
What's that?
I said you may have a point.
Well, yeah, I mean.
I thought you were done.
Every time I turn around, we're reviewing something, and we, we have more staff time, and we got more commissions, we got more hearings, I mean. we got more commissions, we got more hearings, I mean, isn't, just why don't we just leave well enough alone?
Mr. Price?
Yeah, I see Mr. Prescott over there attempting to swallow his microphone, and I'd like to see what the father, what he has to say.
Well, the only other thing I wanted to add to the comments of the city attorney are that if we do take a look at swap meets and our dated swap meet ordinance and specific Plan 15, I think we've had a couple of instances where there were concerns by property owners in a certain part of that specific plan regarding the permitted uses. When that plan was adopted, it was kind of a one-size-fits-all, and it was the county's size, which is much bigger than the city's size, so we were accepting a number of land uses that ordinarily wouldn't be permitted in the city, simply because they were part of county zoning at the time that specific plan was adopted. And we, we did have some serious concerns expressed by some property owners over the compatibility of some of those uses in a certain part of that specific plan, not just once, but twice. And we feel that if this is initiated, it would be a good opportunity to kind of revisit the land use mix of that specific plan and see if parts of it were more appropriate for kind of a lesser range of uses, i.e. Corporate Center Drive.
Go ahead, Mr. Price.
I kind of felt that that's the direction you were going to go, Mr. Prescott, and I felt it important for you to get that out, because I do think that the exercise would be worthwhile in taking a look at some of the older county allowed uses over there, so.
Is it true, Mr. Prescott, that slaughterhouses are part of this? I heard that somewhere.
I'm not sure if they, if that particular use is allowed.
Yeah, there are some, there's some goofy uses in there, okay?
There are some, yeah.
You know, there's one, tanning hides or something, I mean, but it's common sense. Do we really need to go through some evaluation process and two sets of hearings to come up that we, well, we gotta take slaughterhouses out of there? You know? Staff time's pretty valuable, isn't it?
Well, yes, it is, and so we try to respond to council direction.
Well, I remember council direction, and I think it was more that, well, you know, we need to look at what a swap meet is, but, I mean, if there was some simple way to do it, I'd feel a little more comfortable, but there's no simple way to do it, and I just, I just question if it, like I said, is this trip necessary? Do we need to spend hours of staff time in two hearings to eliminate some silly uses that no one's ever going to do in the first place?
All right.
You know, it's a rhetorical question, I don't necessarily expect an answer.
Mr. Fox would like to chime in as well?
Oh, yes, absolutely. I am the first to agree that I think we need to minimize the degree of assignments and what we ask the staff to do, and certainly, we don't need to be dealing with this in terms of a public hearing that we're going to extend, extend a period of time on. So I don't necessarily disagree with anything Mr. Adams is discussing. That being said, I do think it is a necessary and valuable process that we need to go through, not just for this, but we, there's a number of things that come up over time that we find as a council that, man, that's been in the books since the 1970s. And that's the value, is, it's not just this. There'll be others that'll come in front of the council, and we'll find through the staff report that that hasn't been addressed, that that's been in place since, you know, 1977 or 1982. I think it's, it's beneficial and useful for us to, when things come in front of the council, to ask staff to go back and review it, and make them more relevant, make them more contemporary to where we are today. I agree, council's already acted on it. I don't expect we're going to get a swap meet application, but I do think where we have opportunities to clean up our land uses and make it clear, at least this council's intent, we should do that. My expectation is this would come back, it should be a consent item, if that's possible. You know, I know it has to go to the planning commission, but I do think the council needs, we gave direction, I think we need to, to address this.
Well, I mean, I'm sure there will be other cleanups other than the swap meet if we do go through with this.
Right.
But I think from a legal standpoint, this has to go to planning commission and the city council. That is inevitable.
And as you guys point out, there were some goofy uses there. I think we get an opportunity to clean this up and take a look at what's there and see if it's relevant to 2013. You know, I did not know when we had the hearing that we could have a swap meet in that area, that, you know, that it would even be contemplated, so.
All right.
I wish it was, I wish it was that easy, but as has been said, you know, we're talking staff time, planning commission hearing, city council hearing, I mean, that stuff's been sitting there for decades, it's never bothered anybody, and, like I said, the ultimate decision-
I'm with you. I think we should put a three-minute limit on the staff report when it comes back.
And a three-minute limit on discussion.
Yeah. And then we give staff the same red light we give the public speakers.
This is not an action item either. This is just-
No, no, we do have the record, no, we do have to, we have to vote on this. This is not a receive and file.
Right.
So, do I have a motion? Oh, wait a minute, do I have, no, I don't have a speak.
Okay. Do we have a speaker?
No, we don't.
All right, I'm going to move the staff recommendation.
Any comments to the motion? No, then voice vote, please. Councilmember Irwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Price?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
No.
No?
No.
No. Mayor Pro Tem Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Bill De La Pena?
Yes.
All right, that passes. Item E, we still have several Newbury Park-related items going on. Termination agreement with Thousand Notes Rancho Canejo LLC, and this will be presented by Assistant City Attorney Chris Norman.
Yeah, in conjunction with Mr. Spector. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This item involves the 2003 Operating Engineers Agreement. This agreement was entered into between the city and operating engineers for a 140-unit affordable housing project. Part of the agreement required the city to donate 7.5 acres of land located in, on Canejo Center Drive at Canejo Spectrum Street in specific plan area number seven. In May of last year, the city approved an assignment of the agreement to Meta Housing doing business as TO Rancho Canejo LLC. As part of that assignment, it was contemplated that Meta would seek some amendments to that agreement. Through the past year, we've been unable to come to an understanding of appropriate amendments to that agreement, and so both sides feel now that it's best to part ways. And what we have before you is a termination agreement that has the terms for that parting of ways. The general terms require the city to initiate a general plan and special, specific plan amendment so that the property can be developed for an industrial purpose. The property shall then be sold after that entitlement process to a third party at fair market value. Meta will manage that sale. The proceeds from the sale will be divided as follows. Meta is entitled to claim up to $275,000 of expenses to be reimbursed for their efforts to try to effectuate the terms of the agreement and make amendments. After that, the city will receive 25% and Meta 75%. Upon the sale of the, of the property, the operating engineering agreement terminates, and Meta, there's no carryover of any measureee credits, and there's a two-year timeframe to sell the property. Now, Mr. Spector will address the initiation of the general plan and specific plan amendments.
This change to the general plan, land use element, and the specific plan, land use element from institutional to industrial and specific plan in a conforming way, probably from city property to employment park, is just implementing what's basically called for in the termination agreement.
We're available for any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Price?
I have a question. What happens if after two years, there, there's no sale? Because it just, do we go back to the table?
We go back to the table, correct.
Okay. So the terms of the agreement that have been reached up to this point?
Yeah, the 2003 Operating Engineers Agreement would be in effect.
But it says termination agreement becomes null and void, and there isn't any-
After, only if there's a sale of the property.
Oh, okay. Questions?
Let's hope we don't get there.
No questions? No? All right, we do have speakers. James Shoemaker?
Just for answering questions only.
Questions? All right. And Mr. Cohen, questions only? Are there any questions for either Mr. Shoemaker or Mr. Cohen? None? Thank you. All right, then, is there a motion? Mr. Adam?
I will move the termination agreement with TO Rancho Canejo and the general plan, land use element change, and the specific plan element change as well. I think I got all that, didn't I?
That would be recommendations one and two?
Correct.
All right.
In other words.
Yes. All right. And voice vote, please. Councilmember Irwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Price?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Bill De La Pena?
Yes.
That passes. Thank you. And item 9F deals with the city council meeting schedule. Madam Clerk, Linda Lawrence?
Thank you, Mayor. Before you is the standard meeting schedule request for council to consider for the 2014 schedule. It's outlined in your agenda packet. We have two options we're presenting for you. One is a historical summer recess during August, and the other is a summer recess between July 8th and August 26th. So staff is requesting your direction on which option you would like.
Thank you very much, and the time, the summer break weeks does not change. It is the same.
Correct. It's the same amount of weeks in between meetings.
Very good. I will, are there any questions or?
Mr. Price, do you have questions?
No.
Okay. We have two, we, yeah, the, yeah, because, I'm sure everybody has a preference. My preference would be attachment number two, which coincides more with the school calendar, which, and, and school calendar, but go ahead, Mr. Fox.
Yeah, I can live with option two. I think each of us are looking at our own family situations, and the two remaining at home generally get some period off for football, so I was just looking at that, so that'll work. If option two works for everybody else, yeah.
Yeah, I think option two gives you, I mean, vacation time typically can be in July, can't it, usually, and most of August, so option two-
Yeah, the only issue is, coming back in the past, before the Labor Day weekend, we used to get sometimes criticized that we were having council meetings while people were still on vacation. And to some degree, that's a legitimate, I think that's a legitimate issue, is that people can be out of town through the Labor Day weekend, and then we come back, and, you know, I get the school thing, not everybody necessarily, as we've already heard through our housing element, necessarily has children living in the community. In fact, 40% don't.
Do not.
So-
60% do.
Yeah. And of those, I don't know how many are really tuning into the council, so I would just, you know, that would be the only thing that I would point out to the council, if we extended it an extra week, the July 8th, and then maybe came back after Labor Day, whatever that was, I don't see that as a big deal.
Just the, the, I think the, the school district starts already in mid-August, or the week of the 20th, but I think also the advantage would be to, school is usually out either at the end of May or mid-June, and families leave, and we are still continuing to have council meetings. And when we do have matters that concern residents, the families are not able to participate, or residents are not able to participate in, in those particular hearings. But I'd like to hear from the other council members as well. Mrs. Irwin?
Yeah, for me personally, it works out much better to just use the standard calendar, and I, I think the other thing is, I look at all the meetings I have throughout the county, and most of them take August off and don't meet again until Labor Day, so basically, I would be, I mean, what I've seen even this year, because I was looking at it, is that we would have a meeting before Labor Day, and then everything else doesn't start till after Labor Day. So I prefer the regular calendar, because it's more consistent with all the other meetings that, that are being held throughout the county.
Mr. Price?
I, I would say the same thing for the boards that I sit on. Typically, they're dark during August, so.
Yeah, they, they usually are, but, you know.
So, that's my two cents, but-
Yeah, my preference would be, again, attachment number two. Mr. Adam?
Well, and, and option number two, would it be too much to eliminate the August 26 meeting? That would be too much of a spread in time. Couldn't do that.
Yeah, that's, that's a longer break, like we just, like we just had.
That would be too long, okay.
Again, you know, everybody comes back in mid-August, and the-
They, they don't, and I'm just saying, is that, for example, everybody has their person, Westlake's actually going out of town for their first football game next, last week, this year, we went to Hawaii, now they're going to Arizona, and they're going to do that the first week in August, so I would not be here for that council meeting.
For the first week in August?
The last, the last week in August, I'm sorry. Yeah, so I would not be here for that, because they do it before school starts. That's not the end of the world, by the way, as I mentioned to the mayor, it's not the end of the world if, if a council member misses a council meeting. We, I think we, as a community, have exemplary attendance at our council meetings. It's a rarity that there isn't all five of us here, so, unless there's some medical issue or something like that, so. I'm not tied to their way, I, it's-
Which option do you like, then?
What's that?
Which one do you like? Two or one?
Uh, the first one, is actually, was better for me personally, because that gives you the whole month of August off, you know, so.
And, I mean, I, it's, again, we don't, I, I wouldn't, I would probably, because I have to bring my kids away to school, I would probably miss the meeting before Labor Day, so.
Now, I guess my question is, and not to interrupt, is that's assuming that if we take the month of August off, the next meeting, Ms. Lawrence, would be after Labor Day?
Could it be the following week?
If you wanted to take off the month of August, the option could be also meeting on-
September 2nd.
September 2nd and September 16th. The League of California Cities Annual Conference starts on September 3rd.
Oh, I'd rather not do that.
Yeah, that, that's, that doesn't make any sense either.
Yeah, the, the city of Westlake Village, by the way, comes back really early, so, yeah, their, their option, yeah, yeah, Mr. Fox just changed his, yeah.
Are you arguing for option two or what?
Well, no, I was, I was saying that option two, if we went, if we eliminated the August 26 meeting, would make-
That's too much of a break.
Well, I think, I think we- What do you mean, too much of a break? It's too much of a break if we're not getting the business done.
We had this identical discussion last year, and I think my point was that the business of the city doesn't stop.
Yeah, and then, the concern also I have is that, and I've had actually for a while, is that we are holding meetings until the very end of July, when most families are out already on vacation, and it's because school is out, for some private schools at the end of May, and then most schools is June, mid-June, June 12th, June 14th, and then families leave, and then there are still three more council meetings after that. So that, I view that as not very beneficial to, to the residents. It's, it's been a concern of mine for quite a while, but I've only brought it up now. This is only the second time I'm bringing it up.
I don't disagree. Again, I go back to staff, is there something that requires us to meet on that August 26 date? I mean, as Mr. Price points out, it's not like the city stops doing business, and it's not like the council isn't doing work. I know that, you know, all of us do a lot of things, if, if, if not as much or more, because we are not meeting. There's a lot of community involvement that's going on, and, and yes, everybody takes vacation, but it's not like the business of the city stops.
No, it does not.
So the question is, if we adopted the second plan, but didn't meet till after the 26th, that would really meet everybody's interests, and we miss exactly one meeting, and I would just point out, we meet twice a month, so.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor?
Madam Mayor, members.
I think we're missing too many meetings, then.
So you're suggesting option two and eliminate August 26th?
You're taking two months off.
You're taking two months instead of.
No, not quite.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that's exactly what happened for this year. You had two meetings in July, and you opted not to have the second meeting in July, and you came back tonight, September 10th, so you did not have a meeting at the latter part of August. It's council's prerogative if you want to replicate that next year.
Well, I don't know that we can plan that in advance. I think that once we take a look at the proposed council calendar, if it makes sense to cancel the second meeting in July, we can do so, but, and it worked out this year. So that would mean that we would leave it at its current configuration, option one, and with the understanding that if there's not a whole lot that needs to be taken care of in the second meeting in July, then we can cancel that.
That's a good compromise.
Yeah, like we did this year, then. Okay, we can do that. All right.
Okay.
You want to move?
Go ahead and move.
Okay, I'm going to move the option one, attachment one, for the resolution for the council meeting calendar in 2014.
Well, with July 22nd possibly being canceled.
I think we cross that bridge if we come to it.
Yeah, like we did this year.
Right. Based on staff's recommendation, if there is determined we do not need the 22nd of July meeting, then we can cancel it at that time.
As needed.
As needed, exactly. Okay?
Got it.
Got to vote.
Do we have to vote, yes? Councilmember Irwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Price?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Bill De La Pena?
Yes. All right, I do want to add that we're actually adding a extra meeting next week, I believe, council meeting, which is the Campaign Finance Reform Study Session. Yes, so we're not resting on our laurels. All right, so that was item 9F, and we now have committee -- oh, number 11 will be presented by John Prescott, which is the Joint City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and also members of the Successor Agency Board. This is an action you would be taking wearing both of your hats. First, as the successor agency to the former Thousand Oaks Redevelopment Agency, you are essentially the custodian of the assets of that former agency, and they need to be dealt with in the manner prescribed by state law. And then, secondly, as a city council, you are going to be acting as the recipient of some of those assets if you approve the action tonight. And the action tonight is to transfer certain assets of the former redevelopment agency that have been approved by the Oversight Board and approved by the California Department of Finance for transfer directly to the city at no cost. And those assets include three properties, real properties, land that would include the Zuniga Ridge open space, which is about half an acre of land, portions of the Arroyo Cano Green Belt Walkway between Boardwalk and Moore Park, behind the Hillcrest Royale and Human Services Center, and, thirdly, the Heritage Park at the corner of Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Moody Court, I believe it is, or Clay. Those are all properties that are owned by or were owned by the former redevelopment agency. In addition, we had on the redevelopment agency books certain building improvements to City Hall, including some tenant modifications for the former housing offices on the second level, and then also a number of infrastructure items, including the Thousand Oaks Boulevard streetscape improvements that were done about eight or 10 years ago between Moore Park Road and Route 23 Freeway, various street improvements and drainage improvements. Those were, although not physical real property that would be transferred by deed, those are carried on the books of the redevelopment agency. So the Oversight Board and the California Department of Finance have approved all these transfers, and as part of the dissolution of our redevelopment agency and carrying out the state law relating to the properties, we're recommending you, as the successor agency, approve the transfer of those assets to the city, and you, as a city council, authorize acceptance of those assets from the successor agency, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. Any questions? None? Okay, then I'm looking to call Mr. Nick Hidwite, if he's still here. Doesn't appear so, all right. We will then, I will call for a motion, if anybody would like to move that.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Please vote.
Councilmember and Director Irwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Director Price?
Yes.
Councilmember Director Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Director Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Chair Bill De La Pena?
Yes. All right, that passes, and now item 12, follow-up reports on meetings and conferences attended by Mrs. Irwin, League of California Cities.
The report is in the book or in the package or on the agenda, and it was an interesting meeting. Hannah Beth spoke, and she did a great job, and I'll leave it at that in the interest of time.
Okay, we are receiving the report, 12A, City Manager.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, no additional follow-up items from tonight, and with respect to upcoming items, the next city council meeting will actually be six days from today. On September 16th, Monday night, in the Sheer Forum, we will have a study session, one item, local campaign finance ordinance review and update. Council, you did direct us at the study session we had for goal setting to take a look at this issue and come back to you with recommendations, and we will do that next Monday. Then the next council, regular scheduled council meeting will be on September 24th, and at this point, we're looking at two public hearings. One is the triennial water quality report, and the other is Taxi and Massage Appeals Fee Resolution. Then, I would like to just plug one event that's happening on this Sunday from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Simi Valley Landfill and Recycling Center. If we have any residents interested in a free landfill day, that'll be on the 15th. Thank you.
Thank you, all right, and we do have a close session, which will be announced by Tracy Noonan.
Yes, this is a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.92, claimant Teresa Radenko, claim number 1170-2013. It's unlikely I will have anything to report.
Thank you. We would like to adjourn in memory of Virginia Davis, former planning commissioner and Performing Arts Center Board of Governors member, and the adjournment will be done by Mayor Protem Andy Fox, who had a special relationship with Mrs. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, we are adjourning in honor of Virginia Davis. Virginia passed away on August the 22nd at 86 years old. She was preceded in death by her husband Moss and one of her children. As the councils aware and many of the staff, Virginia was a fixture in our community for the better part of half a century. She was one of the original pioneers here in Thousand Oaks. Her name is included with those of Alex Fiori and many others as the city began to develop. She served in the Planning Commission, on the Alliance for the Arts, and the Board of Governors, very active in the arts, and really a patriarch of our community, very active. Virginia loved Thousand Oaks, and she loved living in Thousand Oaks, and she loved probably more than anything else, apart from her family, volunteering in Thousand Oaks. A consummate volunteer. She had a long illness and is certainly resting in peace now, and so on behalf of the council, we wish our condolences to the surviving members of her family, her son Ken Curtis and his siblings, Moscow, Robert and Candy, and of course, her four grandchildren. And so on behalf of the council, we send our thoughts and prayers to the Davis family.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. All right, as already stated, the next council meeting is a special meeting. It's a study session, it's September 16th, and then we'll have a regular council meeting on September 24th. Have a good night.